Good morning. We're here for the Natrona County Commissioners Special Work Session, Monday, June 17th, 2024, 8:30 a.m. We're here for our budget discussion. We, a few weeks ago, heard from our elected officials and departments and some others. We're trying to put together the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. There's a lot to go over. Lots of departments, lots of, lots of items, but I was visiting briefly with our clerk and we thought we might start with the county commissioners' controlled account. Madam Clerk, you want to take it from there?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. If you turn to the Commissioners tab in your budget book and open the first spreadsheet, it's Commissioners Admin and it ends in 21. There's a few line items that I did not put numbers in. I wanted to see what the pleasure of the commission was on those.
What tab did you say?
Under Commissioners. And then it'll be the first spreadsheet. So, Mr. Chairman, I did not put anything in travel, nor did I put anything in office supplies.
Well, for office supplies, as of 5-3, May 3rd, we were at $3,749. I think it's prudent to have at least $5,000 in that unless there's been some, some change I'm not aware of.
Mr. Chairman, to date, we've expended $4,221.
Do, and then I know Michelle is out in the other office doing other things, but are you aware of any significant changes, why we might lower it to a $4,500 amount or stick with $5,000 or $5,500?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not aware of any changes. I think it would probably be in our best interest to leave it at its current rate.
I, I think that makes sense. So let's, I would suggest that we stick with $5,500. Commissioners, what do you think? Anything else?
And then, Mr. Chairman, on, oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Clerk, just, just a second. Commissioner for you.
No, I was just going to say that it looks like on average it's right at about $5,000. I mean, $5,500 isn't that big of a deal to leave it where it's at, but it seems like we're, well, we stay at that $5,000 mark.
What's your pleasure, Commission? And, and I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, you, you were also going to say something.
No, I can wait until after you make your decision on this account.
I just recommend we do what the clerk wants. I mean, she's been in there a long time and she understands it, so.
Anybody else have strong feelings? All right. Well, since it's just $500, let's leave it at $5,500. And, thank you. So for travel, we're going to have some travel expense going to various WCCA meetings, legisla-, legislative session, maybe some committee meetings, legislative committee meetings. So I think we need something there. I don't know if we need $10,000. It doesn't look like we've, we got, I guess, $8,300 in 2023. Commissioners, what do you think we should do for that item? And, and Madam, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, were you going to speak to that?
Mr. Chairman, to date, we've expended $4,516. Now, keep in mind, there are some vouchers that are still being inputted by my office, but I don't believe it would impact this account.
Mr. Chairman, we also have one thing. I did not go to NACO this year because there were so many other things going on. And that's a pretty big expense going back there for that. So that, that is one thing. We spent it the year before, but we didn't this last year. We just had too many things going on this year for me to be able to make that, so.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Mill?
We did not also travel for Waco this year. That'll be somewhere else, so keep that in mind.
Commissioner for you.
No, just looking at the averages across there, though, it seems that $8,000 has been the highest, but I was thinking maybe $7,500, not 10, 10 grand unless everybody feels it needs to be a ton.
So I'd keep it at maybe $8,000 at the very least. 2022, Waco was here in town. And this year, it was here in town as well. The '23, it was up in Gillette. I think Dave took his trip in '23 as well. I'm not sure about '22. So I think that may be more reflective of what we may incur.
My, my, my feeling is that this is, this is a year, a fiscal year, where we need to tighten our belts in a lot of respects. And as, as I think this commission should try to lead the way where it can, I won't charge for my personal mileage or, you know, that kind of reimbursable expense. I know that's not a ton, but I, I don't think we should plan on NACO this year. I think you're, you're right. We will have some additional expense going to Waco. It won't be in Casper, but I, I'd like to see us at $7,500. I think that's the responsible, responsible thing to do. $7,500? All right, let's do $7,500, Madam Clerk.
Okay, moving on. Your next spreadsheet should be Commissioners General Accounts, ending in 33. Should be right behind this first spreadsheet that we just worked on.
This is a four-page spreadsheet, I believe?
It's actually a ten-page.
Oh, yeah, this is a substitute page here.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So going down, the first item is Professional Services, 7061, 00533. I did not put anything in there as I wanted your guidance, please.
Madam Clerk, this, this would be for, would, would this be for when we hire outside legal counsel or would that be under County Attorney?
No, that would be, that would be under this account line, Professional Services, yes.
And if we, I, I know there could be any number of other professional services. If we had engineering that wasn't budgeted for, surveying, some, some of those things. A real estate broker's looking at me. No, but things like that. So we definitely need something. It looks like it was $73,000 was, was the high. $75,000 has been the budgeted amount. $41,000 looks like the last two years. Where are we at presently on that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, currently, we have expended $42,339.
Okay.
For Professional Services?
Correct.
Can you tell me what that was for?
I will run that real quick.
So off the top of my head, I'm, I'm wondering if we can do 50 on that item?
Mr. Chairman, that was just a question I was going to ask, but I'd also be curious in 2021, '22, why that hit 73.
If I remember correctly, Mr. Chairman, was that not for BOE hearings?
Yeah.
If I remember correctly?
Which, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a brief comment, if I may, about that. I think that we should have a policy. That if we hire a lawyer, if we can't find one in Natrona County that can do it, we go look outside. But when we had that, some BOC hearings, we're paying $4,000 and $5,000 for travel expenses from Cheyenne. I just don't think we should do that anymore. And that would help our budget considerably because we do have a lot of good lawyers in Casper and we can find them here. I don't know of any legal issue we've had, period, that a Casper lawyer couldn't have handled at a much better rate. And they'll give us a better rate, too, if we hire them. And I think we owe that to Natrona County citizens and Natrona County businesses.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like we have taken, let's see. NACO, those NACO funds came out of that, $23,734. We also took sustainable strategies out of this account line. The property eval for Westby Street. Association, WCCA, some association dues or planning. GRSG plan, not sure what that was. The MOUs for the GRSG plan for WCCA. Is that ringing a bell with me? Oh, okay. Had a couple expenditures out of that. We also own appraisal for Saddlestring Road.
Hopefully, the indications from our assessor that we're not going to have as many property tax appeal hearings, which is good news. We have talked about retaining outside counsel for the property issue. Commissioner Laird, I, I do agree where we can save travel expense. That's, that's prudent. I also feel like we should give a hard look at hiring Natrona County professional service providers. If, if not give, I mean, we should give, we should apply some sort of preference to that. But I do know that in a lot of cases, it comes down to expertise and time availability. And, and if the issue is specific enough and complex enough, sometimes we do have to go outside the county to retain those folks. But, um, Commissioners, do you think 50 would do it? I don't know if we're going to have it. I don't think we're going to have a NACO expense. And Madam Clerk, where does the WCCA dues fit in?
That should be coming out of 7602, under dues convention expenses.
Okay.
And that's, that's one I was going to speak to.
But I think the NACO thing was a one-time deal in order to get that up and running, yeah.
Yes, I believe you're right.
How many people, just piggybacking on something you've said in your comment about paying your own expenses, I think that's a fine offer on your part. I've never submitted any expenses, wouldn't intend to, but I don't, I just don't think everybody needs to go to these things. I think it's a waste of money. I think you can have a person go, come back and give a presentation of the things that are highlighted for other Commissioners' knowledge. If anything, you can pull a name out of the hat or somebody can volunteer, a lot of things. But I just don't think all five people need to troop down to all these things.
I think we should use our, our judgment. I think those of us that have been to all of them or most of them or any of them, I think that, that may ring true. I, I think there are some programs that are put on that, and there are some, sometimes there are some reasons for all of us or most of us to go. What do we think for the number, guys?
I think $50,000 would probably do it. I mean, that, on average, that's what it is, so.
Commissioner North?
I think that'll, I think that'll be fine.
I'm fine with me.
It's, this year is going to be, I'm nervous about.
Be tight. Let's, let's go 50 on that, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
If you went a little lower, Mr. Chairman, we might not be so inclined to hire some of these services because we do have a lot of in-house people that can handle some of these problems.
We just dropped it by a third.
Thirty?
By eight-thirds, $25,000 off of the.
All right. Madam Clerk, are you reporting or?
Well, I would like to speak to a couple others here, just so you're aware of where I got these numbers.
Great.
So the accounting auditing services, that was given to me by Nick. That's based on certain scenarios. So we did the middle ground on the auditing services for that number. MPO expenses, that was per Beth Andrews at MPO. The 911 monthly cost, I received that from the city. An estimate, of course. Stationary printed material, I reduced it due to not using as much as we had budgeted. So if you have any questions or concerns with that, would you please let me know? Legal notice publications, I left that static. Dues and convention expenses, that is the WCCA, that was the amount given to us by WCCA. So that's, reflects that number. And further down, indigent funeral burial expenses, that number was given to me by Coroner Whips. Is there any concern with that number?
I wrote down, after meeting with our coroner, a $30,000 number for that. And I don't have a note as to why I did that. If, if he suggested $35,000, then I think we should stick with that.
Yeah, I had sent him an email.
Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I had sent him an email and that was the number that he had given me.
35?
Yes.
I think, I think we need to do that. I think he's the expert in that area.
He's definitely the expert.
And after a few years, you know, we can see.
Well, Jim has been very conservative about everything that he's done. So if he's saying it's $35,000, I have no question about that at all.
Great.
Moving down to litigation legal expenses, that number was given to me by Heather Duncan Malone, which is the same as our current budget. There was no increase. She says this line would cover litigation expenses, not covered by Warm. For example, a legal challenge to a resolution or personnel hearing for a deputy sheriff. That's just an example she gave.
Great.
Insurance premium, those are all, those were given to me by HR. That's our Warm liability, all of our other insurance coverages. Moving down, animal control was provided by the city. Historic preservation, that is in a request of theirs, which is in the worksheets and, and the, like their narrative, which is behind your worksheet, if you will.
Madam Clerk, can we go back to animal control?
Yes.
Where do we stand? Oh, is that one of those billed quarterly? So the reason my 5-3 expenditure number is 114 is that it hadn't been billed through the end of this fiscal year?
Yes, there's a delay in, not a delay in billing, but you're, you're right. But let me see where we are real quickly.
But I, I see that in the previous year, '22, '23, it, it didn't get billed out to the full budgeted amount.
And again, we don't go to these entities to beg to spend our money. So, you know, I think they've had transitions, staffing transitions and stuff over there as well. So that may, that very well could be the problem or what happened there. As to date, we have expended $138,415. Now, again, there might be the last quarter invoice downstairs in the pile to be entered. I'm not real sure.
Does the $234,000 number that they provided, is that broken down into the different areas or categories?
Yes, if you looked in your documentation behind the word or the selfspreadsheet, it should be.
I think I see
Did you bang it?
A operating budget number of 102.
Okay, so if you go to that.
And then animal control officer expenses of 132.
Yes, so if you, there's, it's a two-pager. One will say shelter expenses and then one will say animal control officer expenses. And then behind it is an allocation by population by the shelter and animal control. And these documents were provided to me by the city.
Anything, any other perspectives or thoughts on animal control?
It'd be nice if we could get it under control. Is it, Stevie? The, I mean, it steps up 6K, 80K, 38K every year on the spreadsheet. But are we just going to perpetual step up?
No. So you're in the process of going through a, going back to a joint powers board. They were on it before. And then we went away from it and now we're coming back to it. So I think it's going to be percentage-wise. So I think you'll see some changes to what those will be.
It'd be nice if we could have a standardization or just kind of a.
I'll get you an update, either get to you tomorrow or our next meeting on. Yep.
Okay, Madam Clerk, go ahead. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, so historic preservation, that'll be right after the, their narrative is right after the animal control. It's dated April 24th and it looks like they're wanting to spend some money on a new tourist guidebook, printing of the guidebook, website hosting and upgrades. We're total request of $11,400.
Thoughts, Commissioners? Do we know if the $6,900 for authorship of a new tourist guidebook? Does anybody know if that's 100% of the cost of that or a certain percentage? And if so, what percentage?
And is it one that's redone every year or just every few years?
Madam Clerk?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't have those details. It's not detailed in his request.
Do any of the Commissioners have a relationship with historic preservation to ask that question? I'll ask it and then report back. Let's, let's, I guess just go with that number for now, though.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just make a note on that, though, it's, seems like the last three cycles, it's, and I don't know where they're at today, but seems like it's been half of what they've asked for is what gets expended every year.
Well, if the commission wants to reduce that number by a little bit, I guess speak now or, I mean, I could go either way or I can get an answer to this question, but then report back to you tomorrow.
Right, so in the past, this has been one of our cuts a little bit. As far as the authorship or the pretty, of the new guidebook, when things were tougher, too tight as well. So it's, it's one of those options potentially.
Okay. Well, we could hold off that funding of that $6,000 amount this year and then in this next, you know, 10 months or so, have, have an additional conversation. And perhaps there's compelling reason to include it in, not this year, this coming fiscal year, but the 26, fiscal year '26.
I think so. We've got a couple roads to be working on as well and some different changes going on. So that may be an option.
I'm seeing some head nodding. All right, so Madam Clerk, let's delete from that request the $6,900 and fund the remaining $4,500.
Your next narrative will be Salt Creek Community Rec in the amount of $20,571.
With the waterline funding, obviously, that's a separate matter. And the breakdown is here from Paula Chapman. It looks like we're funding 100% of those items. So what do you, what do you want to do, Commissioners?
In the past, we, again, in the past, we haven't funded the entire thing. Guess that they had a little skin in the game. Midwest being what Midwest is, though, they can't afford a whole lot, even in good years. But I don't think we should fund the whole thing.
Chairman, I think that they, they were at 17-5 this last year. They expended 16-253 unless that's changed.
That's correct.
So I would suggest that we stick with that 17-5. Yeah, I mean, it's not that much of a reduction what they're asking, but.
I, that's kind of where I was leaning on that, too. You know, I mean, everybody's got to tighten their belt a little bit and that'll still take care of what they've done in the past. It just, they just may not be able to expand quite as much.
Okay, so we'll go with $17,500, Madam Clerk?
Okay. All right. The next one is day reporting. I reached out to County Legal to ask if that contract had stayed the same or if there's a renewed contract. I, I didn't get any further information. So I did not know what you wanted to do with that particular line item.
Were you working with Heather from Eagle?
I had reached out, yes.
Okay, I just sent her a text.
Now, I will say, Mr. Chairman, that currently we have expended $136,757. So we're over in that account line.
So that's a urinalysis, drug testing, that kind of thing for new employees and for the random, the randos?
I don't, that is not, the new employees comes out of HR is my understanding.
Oh, seem I know what that is off the top of their head.
I believe day reporting is what's, Dallas might remember. I think it's ordered by the courts for, is part of a probationary thing to where they have to go do random tests.
That's part of it.
Yep.
Well.
That's not anything we're going to have any control over them if it's ordered by.
Really, it's ordered by the courts.
That's been part of the problem in the past is some of that stuff was ordered by the courts and so.
The problem is it's increasing. The problem is it's increasing.
Yeah, yeah.
Like all of the other uh issues involving the judicial system.
Well, um is that is that that would be just circuit court judges? Would that be District Court Judge too? Let's let's go with the one thirty or one thirty-six number for that. And then um I mean, unless somebody else has a better idea, but I'll I'll follow up with the judges. Um maybe Commissioner Laird, you and I can just kind of understand their processing. I know that the minute one of the municipal court judges created a bit of a budgetary spike last fall uh for the city of Casper. And I know that's a different kind of situation.
They're gone now.
Right, and then that that's what I was alluding to, and that's a different situation in terms of employer-employee relationship. But at least have a conversation to to understand their philosophy and what they're seeing. But Commissioner Laird, you're right. Thing things in this realm are just getting more expensive um with the, you know, criminal not not activity, but um you know, the proceedings that then have this kind of ripple effect.
Yeah, the theory is is that they put them on day reporting and that hopefully they don't have to be in jail, which is more expensive. So they're actually picking the the less expensive method of trying to maintain some control.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
What what'd you say is one thirty-six something this point?
One thirty-six seven fifty-seven. And it just says pre-post adjudicated clients. And it looks like it's per month, so.
Potentially, we may wanna do one forty. I hate to do that, but just how things are rolling.
I would agree with Commissioner Mills. We're not done with this month either, so you very well could almost hit the one forty mark.
Alright, it sounds bad, but I think we need to do it.
Alright. Mr. Chairman, the the ugly one, the ugly redheaded stepchild, no, I'm getting juvenile detention center contract. That was that those numbers were provided to us by the sheriff, if I'm not mistaken.
It's another one of those numbers, Mr. Chairman, associated with the last one.
Right. So cornerstone programs. This is the cornerstone thing, correct?
Correct, yes.
So Cornerstone sent us this nice letter, May twenty-first. Posing annual contract of two point three eight one four two nine million, a three hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred and five increase. After getting this letter, I uh met with the cornerstone people and our county attorney. And they gave detail like what we see in this letter. I visited with the sheriff about this provider. And uh I think it's kind of it it sounds like this is a great provider doing really good work and it sounds like it's a it would be a heck of a lot less than if we had our sheriff do it because of the um just basically payroll costs would be um higher. I don't feel like we have a choice this year. So I don't know why the number's a little higher than two point three eight one. Why is it two point four five one?
Did you look at their numbers, Mr. Chairman, in terms of the number of children that they're involved with per year? Is it changing significant significantly?
Uh we they give some general background um and it does look like there's been an increase. Commissioner Laird, I don't know if if I could characterize it as significant.
And then I'm wondering if we shouldn't get bids every year, shouldn't put it out for bids every year.
There are there are not a lot of qualified um service providers that that provide this kind of uh work. I don't disagree that we should, you know, be open to a bid. Um I just don't know that there, you know, three companies, you know, rushing to provide this service. Madam Clerk, um did you see how we have this proposed number of two point four five one? I'm I'm assuming there's something else going into the mix.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I received an email from Sheriff Harland that said the increase would be four hundred thousand. So I just added that to the twenty-three twenty-four revised budget amount.
Yeah, I'd change I'd adjust it to the letterhead, what they're requesting, not not just straight across four hundred.
What is the what is the number?
Two point, well, two million, three hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
I did not have that figure at the time this was prepared, so thank you.
Thank you.
That was in their letter, I think.
I did not get the letter at the time the books were prepared.
No problem.
Thank you. Well, that's better.
Yeah, I feel like. Okay, in all seriousness, um thank you. And you want to talk about misdemeanor housing?
Yeah. Bear with me. I usually have two screens, so I'm flipping from screen to screen. So they have not expended anything this year. That's another one that we don't see bills very often, for whatever reason.
I I'm sorry, I don't even know under what circumstances that would come up in one of these programs or through court. My my feeling, though, is that ten thousand dollars isn't a ton of money. And just to be conservative, maybe we leave it at ten thousand one more year. And and if and if somebody, if we have a conversation with somebody and they can tell us why it's not even needed or why it might be needed, um that can occur during this next fiscal year.
Mr. Chairman, I know it's not a lot of money, but they've expended five thousand when they, you know, then sixty-three ninety when they asked for forty and then it was taken down to ten. They've done none uh haven't expended anything. I would suggest that we take that down to seventy-five hundred. I mean, it's it's only twenty-five hundred dollars, but it's twenty-five hundred dollars.
Do they where do they get their funding from?
I don't know.
I have no idea.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll tell you, we have not ha paid an invoice since May of twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I'd agree as well, dropping that. Uh just nothing else to show future Commissions, the boards that uh this is a line item that is continuing continuously decreasing since we've been able to grab a hold of it, so or the intention intention to decrease.
Okay, let's go. That's fine. Let's do seventy-five hundred for that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next is the Youth Crisis Center and there is a narrative in your booklet.
I think we're good with that one.
I do, too.
I I think the presentation was good. I think the work being done is good. I think the director's doing a great job. I think it's well articulated in both the uh presentation and the materials. So I think we should stick with the request on that.
And it's one of the programs that service our children and they're doing a fine job.
This is stuff that uh in the back end, you don't see it right now, but just potentially the cost savings to the county will be substantial if they can get get kids put on the right path, so you know, it's it's very well spent.
Alright, going on, uh Conservation District, forty thousand. And it's a request in your a narrative in your booklet as well, following the Youth Crisis Center request.
They do good work that's just leaving the same.
I'll check it out.
I'm in agreement with that as well.
Okay, moving on, excuse me, health department health department contract. That will be under your Health Department tab, her narrative and and all of her supporting documentation will be under your Health Department tab.
Go on.
Uh you ready to move on?
Yep.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. It's like, okay.
I wouldn't come back to Health Department.
Okay, CNFR contract, that's the increase for the year. Uh it's increased increases yearly. So that is that static amount for the increase for this upcoming fiscal.
Now, it says in the line item CNFR contract. Is is there a written contract? Okay, I didn't remember that.
Mr. Chairman, in that contract, it has an escalator in there for each year.
Okay.
Well, and they're escalating each year, too, making more money, aren't they? More people, more activities.
Yeah, which in turn gives us more money.
Exactly.
And then the fair, would you like to come back to that?
Yep.
And community action as well?
Um, let's talk about community action.
And that'll be under a separate tab in your book also.
Oh, okay. Well, then that's fine.
Okay. The library, you would like want to come back to that?
Yep.
So moving down. You'll go to ninety-one sixty-two, which is the principal payment for the Detention Center bonds. And then right below it is the interest payment. And I think that will be done in December of twenty-five, I believe, yeah.
Great.
GAL expense ninety-one seventy-one. I think we've over expended that and that may be a um maybe a invoicing issue. Well, we have expended twenty-eight thousand five seventy-four.
Is this for the GAL office, the lease? Um is are there reimbursements to actual GAL uh appointees?
Not out of this line, that those uh come out of Jill's line, I believe. This is just for the office space, it's my understanding.
How did it get over budget if it's under the lease agreement contract?
Good question. Let me see, let me make let me see what the uh billing is. Maybe it's.
Is this also including the uh janitorial?
I'm not certain, to be honest with you. I wish I could remember all of this, you guys, I just can't.
You do really well. Don't worry about that.
I think we did add that janitorial service in there. I think that's what it I think that may be what the additional amount was when they moved out of here. They moved over, I think that's that was a something that they brought forward.
Which?
I can't find it, the the cornerstone. Thank you, sir.
I had it under the sheriff.
Let's see, July, October.
So if the contract says X dollars per month plus janitorial and then the janitorial goes up, I guess that could be an explanation. If it's a tenant supplied rather than a landlord supplied item.
Well, it doesn't if it the first payment we made in July of twenty-three was two thousand three hundred and seventeen fifty. And then after that, it's been two thousand three eighty-seven oh three, so it's been sixty-five bucks more. I I don't know. So now the current, it looks like monthly amount is two thousand three eighty-seven oh three.
And and do they do they bill? That would be one that's billed um in advance rather than in advance, probably.
It doesn't look like it.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering if maybe they've got July in there already. Commissioners, we can stick with our number from last year, which is twenty-five thousand. We can go with something closer to actual, which is what, twenty-eight thousand something?
Twenty-eight six forty-five. Here's the GAL contract. So it's increasing for twenty-four, so that's good to know.
Thank you.
One of the things that's interesting is I I just know somebody highlighted this, I think maybe Michelle. Um term of the lease ends July thirty-first of this year. Unless this has been expanded. The twenty-twenty-three amount, twenty-three eighty-seven oh two comes out to be twenty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-four point two four, which sounds a lot like our actual.
Yes, that's what we've been paying every month.
So we can do a couple of things. I think I think somebody needs to talk to the landlord over there, and I think that ought to be our legal department. Because otherwise this goes into a uh at-will at-will situation. Um so I I think we ought to get that squared away. Okay, I I probably it took me a minute, but yeah, that. Let's leave it at that same amount. Uh and unless you guys want to propose something different, we could that'd be that'd be a uh negotiation strategy. If we said, no, we're gonna be at twenty-five and we approve that and we tell the landlord. It's already approved at that amount, if you wanna come down to that.
I agree with that.
I'm sorry, I said.
Do we have space over there now?
Hey, so Hall of Justice, or is there any room over Hall of Justice?
Empty space.
Empty space.
There will be someday.
Well. But if, if there is currently, if we're coming up on the end of the lease and we've got space, why not put them in there and save ourselves?
I don't know where, where we are.
Can you follow up on that?
Yeah, I can. How much room do they need?
Uh, well, are they, I don't know how much of that building they occupy, but I used to own that building and there's five thousand square feet up. And in that little GAL office, um what, what I thought was where they were, that's fifteen hundred square feet. But I, again, I've never been in that building since I told you. So that would be closer than fifteen hundred. Well, I, I think, um. How quickly, do you think today you can look into existing space? Commissioners, do you want to leave this as zero, or do you want to, uh, put in a number?
Let's put in a number for a holder, if you can. Can bring him, bring him over, if not, then at least we're not, we don't forget it and get blamed, so.
Do you wanna do that, a status quo number, or do you wanna go back down to, uh, where this started?
Did, uh. Have we got, have we got the assessor completely removed?
No, I think she's got one more office to move, but I'm not sure what she's doing with that.
Think there's still a couple of years on. Mr. Chairman, I would make a suggestion that we take that down to zero because the, obviously, the contract is gonna end on that. And as you just said, it's a negotiation factor for us to make sure that we find a place for them to be, so.
Well, if we take it down to zero, though. Then, then we're either forcing ourselves to make an amendment if we can't figure out something in the next twelve months. Or we're gonna, I, I just don't feel like I have enough information to tell GAL, this is where you're gonna be, without a few more conversations.
Can you follow up with, with like Hall of Justice for Warren, but then Tammy as well?
Yep.
And see if she's got any more movement or, or whatever, and if there's a, like the downstairs, if that's freed up. Bring GAL over, make sure that that would work for, for we can move them.
So leaving it where it is budgeted at twenty-five thousand. Doesn't take into account. The actual, the, the escalator in the, in the lease, which is, brings us to that twenty-eight six. I know that we don't have to finalize this right now, what are we gonna do, zero, twenty-five thousand, or twenty-eight thousand, or some other number?
Let's leave it at twenty-five right now.
I'm okay with leaving it at twenty-five, my point is, is that it's coming to the end of a contract, we need to make a decision. If we have space for them and we can save ourselves, then we should.
Yep, we, uh, I'll talk with legal today, um, Dave will talk to the assessor and, uh, look into Hall of Justice space. And we'll circle back on this in the next, uh, day or so.
So Mr. Chairman, leave it at twenty-five?
Correct. The other thing, this is a three-year lease. It, it might be prudent to not do a three-year lease, six months, twelve months, kinda thing. As is, I don't see an automatic renewal, uh. That's not legal advice, but. What we don't want is for this to roll, automatically roll over into another three-year term. And so, we need to do something before seven-thirty-one, uh, in any event. It should go into month-to-month. That's not my legal. I agree. It's just common.
Yep.
Yep. And I agree. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, the final one is the ad valorem tax. And that number was provided to me by the schedule and Nick, and I believe that matures twelve fifteen of thirty-five.
So what, so what's the number for this coming year?
Ninety-three thousand one eighty-six forty-eight.
I have that as the extended amount. As of five-three.
But it's also the requi, the new request.
Okay, I had a blank for that, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I threw that in there, I apologize.
Ninety-three one eighty-six, I don't think there's anything we can do about that. Forty-eight. Okay.
Okay. Uh, the next will be the county roads. What should be your next tab. All of these figures were provided to me by Mr. Hagler. And he has a, a narrative. I'm not sure if it's necessary to go through every line unless you have, unless you have something you, that glare, is glaringly sticks out to you. Or we could go line by line, whatever your pleasure.
I'm, I'm looking at the accompanying, I guess, narrative or the, uh, the detailed list. County roads study. Is that currently still zero? This is, uh, line ninety-one eighty-two.
He, there's a request of sixty thousand.
Right, but for current fiscal year, is that still zero?
As far as expended, let me look real quick, sorry.
That's fine.
Well, when I say real quick, real quick in a minute.
Sure. My, I guess where I'm going with this is, it's, it looks like maybe it's been put off a couple of years, I wonder if we can put it off one more year.
There's been nothing expended, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, I'm sending a message to. Mr. Hagler on this item.
And then I will tell you that, um, the tribal consistency grant, the eight hundred thousand, was not reflective in these budget requests. On these sheets.
That's, uh. Right, so it's not on these sheets, it's in this narrative, um, and I think we've received that money?
Yes, and so I did not put it in these, in this request, so when we get to projects and grants, we'll need to speak to that, if you don't mind, please.
Okay.
And also, the, um, Cordis Road and Strohacker Drainage, I put those. Under road flood repair in projects and grants, because that's what we had created for those particular expenses. So we can talk to that too when we get there.
Okay.
So anything further on county roads?
I don't believe so, I'm, I'm asking, um, Mr. Hagler if we can remove that sixty thousand dollars. Um, I'll let, I'll get back to you on, on that. It may just be the year we need to do it, but if it's completely discretionary, then maybe we, we hold off on that.
Okay.
The, the grader, is that one of the one cent?
Yeah, the, the grader that's really now a loader, that's really now in the one cent.
Yeah.
So I, I think we've, isn't that how we, we came?
Yeah, and we can get into more detail on that when we get to one cent.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, just a real quick question, under gravel, it's, so, this last year, it looks like there was a request to seven, or approved seven hundred and fifty thousand, but we only expended one fifty, do. Not that it, it's gonna affect anything next year, but was there a project in there that we did not do? That, uh, to the tune of about six hundred thousand dollars?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, I could speculate wildly, but we can, we can ask that question too. I'll make a note to do that. That, which line is that?
Well, let's see.
Ninety-three oh four, zero zero five three six.
Madam Clerk, is that, has that one changed since our five-three of twenty-twenty-four date?
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars have been expended.
That's what it is now, okay, two-two-five. Okay.
If, are you, are we finished with that for now?
I believe so.
Okay, if you wanna go, I'm gonna bounce around just a bit, if you go to your projects and grants. Which should be two tabs, two tabs over. Now, you'll notice, yes. You'll notice a lot of these are blank because they are the sheriff's office grants. And once all the vouchers are entered, Melissa and I will work on these numbers and they're just a carryover amount. A lot of these are reimbursement-based, that type of thing, so. It won't amount, it won't impact the budget a great deal. But one in particular is Children's Advocacy, ninety-two fifty-six, they have a narrative in your book. They're requesting forty-five thousand dollars in funding. No, we have funded them for, for years. Any questions on that?
This is another one of those programs that is a front-end program, you don't see the results, um, but the potential to save the county money is substantial. I think we continue it and probably at the same level that they're requesting. Just going through their. What they, what they had going on in, uh, twenty-twenty-three, the increase of what's going on in the community. I don't think this is a program that we should be, uh. Cutting back, but going with what they're recommending.
What, what is it, is it a lawyer advocate, or what kind of advocate?
The, the narrative is right underneath that, that spreadsheet, but it, it's got a, a number of different aspects of the, what they do. Um, mental health, victim advocacy, forensic interview.
Okay, I see it.
Commissioner alert, this is geared more towards, uh, children, so it's forensic interviews, children that are involved in, uh, you know, victims of sexual abuse. Or have seen violence within their family, um, it, it, they have nurses on staff, forensic interviewers, psychologists, this is very much in need of program.
Yeah, I see that, I agree with that.
So, we're good there.
Okay, moving down, um, again, a lot of these are reimbursement-based. And when you get down to MRG, I didn't plug a number in there yet, so.
Okay, we had, um. A lot of discussion on this and a lot of, a lot of thoughts and, and opinions, um, but I believe we landed on a. Uh, not to exceed number of six hundred and, wanna say fifty-seven thousand, but that might not be. Uh, I'd have to go back to like Casper alliances breakdown.
Okay.
With the city, the private, and Fly Casper, okay. I knew that.
There was less than I've had.
Yeah, it's, it's detailed on that sheet, Tracy, we can get that on a break.
Okay. And Michelle could probably bring that up rather quickly too, I bet.
If, yeah, if only she were listed. If, yeah, if only she were listening.
Oh, if only. Um, and then tribal consistency. Again, I've only, we haven't put a budget number in here. Um, there is that money allocated for a shop out at Roden Bridge, but I don't put it in here as a, a request to the general fund because it's a reimbursement based also, in my opinion, so I've never put a budget number in there.
As long as we don't have the tribal funds as our, on our income side.
Right.
Then it's apples to apples.
Right. And then the road flood repair, I did put the Cordis Road and the Strohacker. It's my understanding that those project, uh, projects have been approved and they're moving forward, so that is why I put that number in there. Um, if you don't think that's appropriate, I can take it out, but that's the reasoning behind that.
Is, and that's, that's not reimbursable?
It's the FEMA, I, I don't, it's, I don't know, is FEMA paying a portion of those projects? Or is that our portion? I'm, I'm not real familiar with it, to be honest.
I think that was our portion. I could be probably wrong. I could give Cordis Road, I don't think, I don't know if that was even covered by.
Yeah, it was.
If it was, they did finally get something from that, so.
So if that needs to be changed to reflect our portion or reimbursable, you know, just let me know what that needs to look like. Okay, thank you. Okay. Not sure if you wanna tackle this one yet. The equipment request, capital equipment? You wanna take a break or what do you, what's the pleasure?
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Okay, so that'll be in, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Mail?
Oh, I was just saying, let's go.
Let's go, okay. That'll be under your equipment, which should be in front of, it'd be under your commissioners tab. Everyone likes it different. I can't ever make everyone happy. And I struggle because my book's set up totally different than yours, so I have to flip around a lot too.
Proceed, put them in.
It is right before, one tab forward.
One behind County Roads.
No, they're not all the same color.
Oh, my goodness.
It ends in thirty-nine. Start with clerk of court, seventy-one twenty-nine. Our narrative is inherent. It says the line item is used for needs of the court. I'm requesting it remains the same.
Sorry, which one?
Seventy-one twenty-nine, zero zero five three-nine, clerk of court.
Okay.
She's requesting the same.
Five thousand dollars for equipment?
Correct.
What is it for?
It just says the needs of the court.
Mr. Chairman, has there been any kind of an expenditure on that? It, it shows zero for the last three years.
I think it's for stuff that they can come up that they didn't anticipate in trials, and that trials fluctuate so much that you just don't know.
Yeah, but why would it be, oh, you're, you're right, but why would it be equipment, capital?
Oh, she explained that at one point, and I thought it was relevant, but I have to admit, I forgot it, I forgot the exact information.
I, I think it's there because it has been, and, um, I believe she was going to take chairs out of it last time, but she ended up not needing it, so, um, I think again, just un, unmet needs of the court.
Yeah, let's go down to twenty-five hundred, I'm thinking.
I agree.
And then if there's a compelling reason to bring to our attention in the next day or so, we can address it.
Twenty-five hundred, you said?
Hmm.
Correct.
Okay. Next in line is county development, seventy-one thirty-one. It's for a truck and county cleanup.
I think we needed the truck. We put that off a year anyway. Thank you. Um, and.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, did you say put it off a year?
Finish my sentence, but I'm thinking we don't have the ability to do as much cleanup this year, and so we reduce that by a significant amount, is my, my personal feeling. Commissioner Laird?
Would you say we needed the truck or didn't need the truck?
I, I think we do. I think it is, they, I think we needed it last year, and we said, no, you can have one, and I think.
So this year, we're gonna buy the other one?
We do this year, we, we buy, that's how I'm looking at it.
We're way down in that department right now, too. We only have.
I know, but some of the sales pitch from a marketing perspective on hiring is somebody else might.
Be a truck.
Might be like, look, we, we support our department. Hundred fifty thousand mile truck, that, that's just another thought.
But one of them is for cleanup, the other one is for the building department. So is this for the cleanup? That's what it says, one truck, community cleanup.
No, it's total for both.
The, the truck is for the, the, the planning department, and then the community cleanup is a totally separate item where they have dumpsters, and we let people fill up dumpsters, and we pay the city a cash for, for fifty grand.
Yeah.
And, and, and Mr. Chairman, Commissioner North, in this current fiscal, we put fifty thousand in one cent reserve.
For the truck.
Uh, for the cleanup, I'm sorry.
Has that been a worth, worthwhile endeavor on our part?
It's helped a lot.
Has it?
Yeah, it does. It's really made, it's made a big difference in a lot of the community.
I've, I've had like three or four people on the Coal Creek Road say that was awesome.
Yeah.
Uh, and, um, I think it is great if we can do a little of it, but I don't think this year, do fifty thousand worth.
What's the breakdown? Like, I can't find it in the narratives.
What?
The breakdown between, it's two S, right, it's truck cleanup.
It's fifty thousand for the cleanup and whatever the remainder is.
It's in his, in his actual narrative for the, um, development department.
Oh, Patrick.
Is there any, is there any chance, Mr. Chairman, that we could get a list of the areas they think need to be cleaned up so we could take a look at it and see what we wanted to do rather than just blindly?
They, they went and did Mills area the year before, or was it?
They did Dempsey Acres two years ago, and that was, then that went over really well. Yeah, they, they, and then they did Salt Creek Highway. They're, they've done, they've spread them around in different areas that really, so it's not just one spot. It's, they've been spreading them around, and it's, it's made a big difference.
And, and I'm okay with letting staff continue to have discussion on, you know, because I think they have done a good job with doing, okay, you know, we're not gonna do the same area every year.
I was just gonna ask, wha, what are we spending annually then on the cleanups themselves?
I think this year, we spent forty-five thousand or something like that. It was pretty close to that.
Mr. Chairman, as of May sixteenth, it was twenty-three thousand, six thirty-five. Now, I think there were some outstanding invoices that haven't hit that yet. I'm not sure if they equal twenty thousand.
I wasn't sure, was, did, I thought that we had taken the roll-off out to the, uh, trailer park as part of that money also.
That was two years ago, because they talked about not having it this year, and they were not happy about that, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, they did.
Mr. Chairman, could we reduce that then? Maybe if we're gonna reduce it, could we reduce it by twenty thousand? I mean, if we, if we're at twenty-three now, and fifty is what the number is, if we take it down to thirty, I think we'd still have plenty of money.
I would get it cut in half.
Tracy, did that, did that include, does that number include the vouchers that we also gave out for some of the areas that we couldn't?
Oh, remember, we had that.
Well, they're, they had to do vouchers. Yeah, so I wasn't sure if that was just the cost of the, the roll-off or if that included the vouchers to make sure that we had everything covered, because we did have a hook pickup.
Again, that was through May sixteenth, so I don't know what all expenses had, had come in prior or after that date.
We got an email, um, just recently, in the last two weeks, about the, the, how, how it went for, at the Coal Creek Road, and I think it was over, oversubscribed. Um, so I, I think there's gonna be more on that one, but I think from a planning pers, we can tell planning to just tighten the belt and do what you can for whatever the number is. I'm, I'm good at twenty-five, and maybe we can be, we can add to it ten years ahead, but Dave, um, I'm sorry, Commissioner North, Commissioner Laird, what do you feel like doing?
You know, that's okay with me, but I still would like to see a list of places that need to be cleaned up. We could take a look at it, and we might say, you know, as he said, it thrilled the people, and it's hurting the values of their homes and all of that, that we should do it. But I, I feel blind to it right now, but I think it's a good project.
And, and we did have Christie Turner come in, um, like a year or so ago, maybe it was longer than that, but she did talk about this, and at one point, we were saying, maybe we shouldn't pay people to clean up their properties, and, and I think what ultimately we decided was, let's do it for the community and not look at it as just giving this particular person money to clean up their property.
Came down to.
Well, that's when we started using the, the roll-offs instead of giving the vouchers.
Right, because it came down to public monies going to private individuals to clean up their private property. If we did it as a community, then it,
everybody.
Everybody has opportunity.
So Commissioner Laird, I agree that we, we can have somebody from planning come in and, and tell us, um, about what they might be able to do for twenty-five thousand dollars and how the program's going, but, but I'm, I'm thinking at a number twenty-five or thirty is.
I, I would lean toward thirty because I know the dump is raising their fees also, so just to keep up with the current inflation and everything else, I would, I'd go thirty.
Everybody's raising their fees.
All right.
I would agree with that point, though. It did go up seventy-five dollars a ton, I think it is, so I would say thirty.
Right. Will be twenty less, so we'll be at seventy-eight, five hundred for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, to be aware what, aware of what we have done previously, that is an option or may not be now, um, based on what we're gonna do with the Health Department, but a lot of times, these expenses, we have moved them over to one cent reserve, use, using one cent reserve monies for, for these types of items also. So that's another option. Um, but based on, I think what our plans are for using that money for the Health Department, may not be prudent during this cycle. So with that, moving down to Roden Bridge, he is, his narrative is right behind the develop, development narrative. It's for Buffalo Creek gravel pit, pavement at the Roden Bridge office, two pickups, and a loader for the mountain.
Yeah, the lo, the loader was gonna, was already taking care, I thought both pickups and the loader were already taken care of because they were in one cent.
I think it's an addition.
No, but he said, uh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, my, my recollection is that he said the grader wasn't gonna happen, and so we were going to substitute it, uh, substitute the loader for the grader that's on the one cent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Loader and truck requests were duplicated, covered in one cent allocation. Correct.
And so I think he, I think there was some confusion, um,
So then that's.
The trucks were already there, and when he said, well, the grader ain't gonna happen, that just put the loader in, so I thought this was zeroed out.
Actually, it's, it's not, because you still have Buffalo Creek and the pavement for the beanie.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I thought those two items were zeroed out, but you're right on Buffalo and Buffalo Creek gravel.
And you're exactly right on the duplication. Thank you.
So.
So that drops it.
So this number, what number do you have in your sheets?
Twenty-five or two point five.
Okay, so it's two million, thirty thousand.
Two million, how much?
Thirty thousand. Any discussion on that at all?
So, yeah, let's just say four, so is, is that a reduction of four hundred and seventy?
Yep.
All right, yeah, I agree. Thanks.
Thank, thank you. Any further discussion on that?
Not on the Roden Bridge equipment.
Moving down to Sheriff, his narrative is the next page.
Right.
It's for Intercom and a Axon equip project. And it looks like the equipment, the Axon equipment is, would be a five-year contract?
Right. Two hundred and sixty-eight a year. Oh, well, two hundred and sixty-one for future years.
The continuation of the project, what he's been doing, cameras and et cetera.
One of, one of the issues that, um, the sheriff pointed out in his, uh, letter is that the, um, equipment subscription, uh, subscription, but the, the contracts are expiring in October, at least some of them, and so it really, and, and I don't know which exactly, but like, he said either some of them or most of them. Most of the current Axon agreements expire in October twenty twenty-four and require a new agreement for continuation of these capabilities. The sheriff's desire is to consolidate and restructure Axon agreements efficiently in the most cost-effective man, manner. And, and these are the, uh, equipment and services for body worn cameras, vehicle mounted cameras, investigation room cameras, audio video, video evidence data management, data storage, tasers, training support. So that's Axon, Attention Center Intercom System. What are the thoughts on the, uh, Intercom system?
I think that's something we ought to ask Garrett about and talk to him a little bit about that.
Is Garrett gonna add? Is Garrett gonna add? I, I don't know if this falls.
Just, just, just in the contract or just in the maintenance side and contracting, because that's all part of.
Oh, this is this, the intercom system, if there's four, I can't get a part of these for anymore hardly.
He did comment that they needed that due to that factor, so I would, I would not want to cut that, I don't think.
Well, the, the other thing too is that can we do this on joint powers board?
Right.
That's, that's where I was going with that, uh, more than anything else, is if that's something that we need to look at as far as that goes.
Right, and I don't see why it wouldn't, uh.
I don't, I don't either. I guess that's, that's.
So the security update funds, that he's pulling back though, or he's using it, that would be good. But yeah, uh, I don't know why this one fell under joint powers. It's part of the real property, it's part of the hardware, the system that's mounted within that structure, um, it should, should be taken to joint powers.
Yeah, I, I just think that that's where we ought to be taking that and, uh.
What's the definitive line, uh, Jim, with respect to the joint powers on which part of the building they pay and don't pay?
Per our old county attorney and, uh.
Sorry, per our old county attorney and the new, um, city attorney. The contract, one, we need to redo it. That was his biggest thing, was we need to re, rego over it. Uh, there's some difference, notes and scratchings in there that may or may not have been part of the original agreement. It appears that the, the concept initially was that it took the old part, and this is where everybody's thinking, the old part of the, or it, it was the whole jail, and then somebody wrote in there on one of the pieces of paper that it was only the old part of the jail. Nobody knows who wrote that in or why. So what was actually agreed upon with what everybody signed is, it's, it's the jail facility minus the juvenile, and that was our.
If something's wrote in there and it wasn't initial, that wouldn't impress me much.
Yeah, and that's, that's why he believed that, one, it need re, rewrote, but two, that, that they are, that, uh, city, county are, are mutually, you know, joint powers covers the entire facility, not just the old portion, and, and since he's moved over to, uh, the city, I don't know if his opinions changed.
So.
I'm glad the way you praised that.
Um, so this is two hundred and thirty thousand, so should we budget half of it then?
Well, it is showing one thirty-seven.
No, no, I'll, I'll get to that. I'll get to that, but it's two hundred and thirty is the overall cost.
Right.
We budget half, and then we subtract from our half this reallocation, because that's already been on our side anyhow.
Right.
So our actual budgeted, uh, amount, um, would be that, would be the, it'd be what, one fifteen minus ninety-three? Well, no, the ninety-three hadn't been spent though, so we'd need to reallocate that.
Well, it's six, it's sixty forty. It's not, it's not fifty fifty, it's sixty forty.
So what's the, what's the number?
Sixty percent of that sells ours. So it'd be about a hundred and thirty. Approximately. Could be ours here.
Hundred thirty-eight, forty-seven, eighty.
Does anybody know the percentage of, uh, prisoners there that have been arrested by the police department as opposed to the sheriff's department?
It's not how the contracts are, for the initial aids.
Maybe, maybe, because it's a mu, it's much more, isn't it? The city uses it more.
The city is, yeah, the city.
It is, but this, the county is statutorily responsible for the sheriffs.
Well, how do we get to the joint powers board and why are they responsible for a percentage then?
I'm not sure how it all came up, Tracy.
Because they had to have a place.
Kind of prolonged.
Yeah, it's been there forever, ever since we left, but what, third, fourth floor there.
Well, that would be interesting to know, and it would be interesting to, uh, have our competent people take a look at that contract to see what, if what we're doing is proper even, because it, it never felt right to me. I won't say anymore than the, the feel of it wasn't, didn't seem equal, uh, and I think it should be equal. It may, should be a little more top-heavy on the city. And, uh, so we do always have that issue, but I would like to solve that issue if it's possible, in a friendly manner. Because it's a lot of money.
For a budgeted item, we're gonna go with that one thirty-seven, four seventy-three, and we need to, Madam Clerk, make a mental note or other note that we bill hollow justice for their half of the, uh, sorry, your forty percent.
Their forty percent of the two thirty-eight thirteen.
All right, I guess that's Freudian.
So if I'm clear, the one thirty-seven, four seventy-three is our budgeted amount, and then we're gonna go to the city for their portion of the total.
Which would be about ninety-two thousand.
On the intercom?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that services the entire, the entire building, so it should be.
Leave the Axon equipment.
It should be a joint powers issue.
One thirty.
Don't you agree, Steve?
What's that?
That the, that the intercom system should be a joint powers issue. I mean, it services the entire facility.
It has to do with the building itself, so yes.
Okay. So that's the sixty forty again.
Yeah.
But, Mr. Chairman, that number won't, that number will not change other than the fact that they are reallocated existing security update funds for the ninety-three thousand. Correct. Am I thinking correct?
Okay, so the, if we do the joint powers, the digital audio would come down to one thirty-eight, two ninety-two.
Right.
Instead of the two thirty. We still have the, the ninety-three coming back.
Well, but, but, but in turn, when we say it's coming back, it's not really, we, we didn't send over a check to the sheriff, and now it never was expended from our fiscal year this year.
Right, it's just reallocation. It's moving it from last year to this year and putting it in a different place, but we're still, the city's gonna have approximately ninety-two thousand for joint powers. We're gonna have a hundred and thirty-eight thousand for joint powers.
Right.
And that'll, that'll take care of that.
Right.
Right.
So, no, typically, we don't put joint powers board expenditures in our general fund budget.
No.
No.
Well. Then, then how do we plan for expenditures when they come up?
Well, that we've have, don't, or haven't, or we've been lucky because we've had a one, a one cent trust account that was set up many years ago for the Hall of Justice and Joint Powers Board. It's not one cent money, it's tr, it's, they named it a one cent trust account. I don't know why. That was just how it was set up a long time ago. So that's what we've been taking our portion of our joint powers board expenditures from. But in light of that, we could certainly keep it in the budget and then write a check to the, our portion to the joint powers board fund. At least we would have it budgeted, and that wouldn't be a, more of a, um, heartache for us trying to come up with that money.
So for that specific project, it may be better, work out better that way than us just uploading a, like, a check funds into that program, that is that fine, like we normally do.
Well, I, yeah, I, I wonder though, how much money is in this trust account?
There, it's, there's five.
Like, not much?
No, no, no.
It's not?
No. No, no, not enough for, no, 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 no. That's why I even cringe to bring it up, but I think, actually, I think the current balance right now is seventy-six thousand or something, but.
We constantly have to move money back into it every time we spend.
And our joint powers board accounts, we try to keep at a hundred thousand dollar level.
Yep.
Um, for emergencies type things, so that money is not free to.
And that's why I'm saying, if we move, do it like this, and take that funds and then allocate it or designate it as this and move it to there, then at least we have traceability. This is the project that this money's going to, instead of just putting funds into the, into that line item, the one cent.
Yeah, we'd be a little, we'd be ahead of the game on this, on this one. I would just have to make sure to communicate that with Melissa, that, that check goes to the joint powers board.
Yeah, because this will have to come before joint powers board to vote on it anyway.
So we're leaving the four oh five, six nine five?
The joint powers board has to vote on the intercom system?
If they're gonna pay for it, yeah.
Well, I thought we were dropping that though.
Mr. Chairman, I guess the question I have is, before we go dropping the amount of money, if it has to go to a vote before the joint powers board that they're gonna pay for a portion of it, I would rather have the money there in case there's a vote that comes out.
That's what I was saying, is that we put the money in there, and then it comes to the joint powers board to vote on it. That, that's, that's where I was going to.
The discussion point was brought up to cut it in half and sir, cut it down by the percentage, and I, I don't think we should do that, because you don't even know if it'll be accepted by the joint powers board, so I'd put the full amount in it.
So. The, the reallocation, um, is kind of a misnomer. Uh, because it, it comes out of the budget. So, yeah, we don't, we don't change that one. The question is, we actually have to add that ninety-three thousand until it's been voted on, so it's really not four oh five, it's four ninety-eight.
They're voting on theirs, their budget session's going on right now, isn't it?
See what I'm saying, Madam Clerk?
Yes, but they intended, they, meaning Sheriff's Office, intended to use reallocation of existing security update funds.
And so that money is already allocated. It's already in their budget, so we don't have to add that in. If we don't get it, then we don't, it's, it's not, it's not in addition to our current budget.
I thought that was in there from previous year's budget.
It is.
That they haven't spent.
I believe it's tribal consistency fund, so it carries over. They were granted, uh, hold on, I'm gonna quit talking for a minute, till I know what's going on. Actually, that was their SLIB money. Um, this current fiscal, they carried over a hundred and eighty-five thousand, forty-seven dollars and thirty cents. So in reading this, if I'm understanding this correctly, there's ninety-three dollars, or ninety-three thousand, three forty left of this SLIB money that they were going to use towards these, this intercom system.
So this is SLIB?
SLIB.
So then we would not, this would be a reallocation.
Yes, and we would.
The general fund type thing.
Correct. So we would not budget the full two thirty-eight thirteen.
Right.
But that will be the cost that we present to the joint powers.
Correct.
Right.
Final answer?
Yes.
Leave it as it is.
And you guys will carry the torch on Hall of Justice.
Yeah, we will. We'll bring that up and we'll, we'll tell Pearl on that he needs to present that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, are you ready to move forward?
Yep.
Moving forward to the fair, the new number will be one hundred and fifty-five thousand. If you remember the conversation, he had put three hundred thousand in for, to finish the paving, and that's allocated in one cent seventeen over a two-year period. Are we on a, in agreement on that?
Yes.
One of the, when you say are we in agreement on the asphalt part of it?
Yes, I thought it was a duplicated number.
From the past, how about that?
What's that?
Where it was from the past, that was within the one cent already.
Right. One of the things I'm wondering is if we can cut the bleachers. You want portable bleachers, I don't know how much was assigned to that.
Well, building and structures, according to his budget request, says sixty-five thousand, but that includes the bleachers, doors, and two big heaters.
Right.
And a few other items.
Yeah, as I, as I looked at that, I understand why they want portable bleachers. Um, I get it. I'm just wondering if we can put that off. Three buildings, in addition, they have three buildings that need doors and frames replaced to meet county codes, so I don't think we should delay on that. We need to replace the last two big heaters in the industrial building. I don't think we should wait on that.
No.
So, um, my, you know, and then panels for track and pin continuation. Um, so really, if, if we can tighten the belt on the bleachers, that might be a substantial.
Chairman, I just want everybody to bear in mind, you know, that's a money-making facility and one that most of our people use, uh, and see several times a year. And, uh, I'm one of the commissioners that think that we should outdo Cheyenne Frontier Days with our facility.
Well, um, good luck. I, I think, I, I don't mind the, you know, A B I. And I certainly don't mind investing into that fair, and I think we've done that. I think we're, we'll continue to do it. Are we gonna put a placeholder on that? Uh, kind of with a question mark on the bleachers?
Well, the bleachers is what the people set in. I mean.
Now, these are just, these are the primary bleachers Dallas.
Do, well, are they used by people setting in them? Whether, whether you're a primary guy or not, that's where you have to sit. I'm just pointing out that it's, you know, the city's now even considering, when they redo the event center, getting the seats more comfortable up there, which is a problem for them.
All right, we'll come back to the fair.
Mr. Chair, before we move on from the fair, I know that the idea in here is to reduce, but I have a question as to whether, under the fair itself, I think it's probably the best place to put it, but with, uh, CNFR this year, we had, um, an issue with, uh, as far as behind the shoot, sh, uh, shavings to put back on the soil back there. Um, and it's been a problem for several years. I don't know what the cost is. I have a message into the city of Casper, because they do have piles of, of it back there that they use for parks within the city. Um, I don't think it would be that much, because it's literally like a truckload per year, so it wouldn't have that big of an expense to it, but I'd like to know if we could put that under the fair's budget, just putting, putting an amount in there to cover that each year. I mean, it's a million dollar event. We're not talking about that much money that needs to be expended to have the right.
I, I agree. I, I think that those facilities should be maintained impeccably, because they're used by so many people and they make money.
Yeah, what's that?
This, so this is new, new issue. Um, I, I think you and Commissioner Millen can get together with Mr. Jones.
Good.
And, and see if that's something they've even thought about. Um, but. And and see if that's something they've even thought about. Um, but then maybe an opportunity there.
Good.
Okay, um, parks.
Well, this one hurt my head. Um, so the narratives are following the fair narrative. After looking it over, if you look at, it'll be pay, it'll say number two on the bottom. And it talks about engineer, architect contracts and lodge furni- furnishings. And then you move over to page three. That's where I came up with the eight hundred and fifty four thousand dollar number.
Okay.
Um, according to Michael Brown, the engineer architect contracts were not. Part of the. Conversation. As far as the lodge. Goes and the shelters, that's my understanding and I could be way off base, but that's how he presented it to me. And I think it kind of followed suit a little with the lodge furnis- furnishings as he spoke to during his budget presentation.
Right, well, I I think we can make substantial cuts here. Um. Mister Brown, at our request prioritized these items. Um, and his, his number six priority. So working from least. Lowest priority. Were the picnic tables and fire rings for forty thousand. He said that he wanted to get thirty or forty more. But then we asked how many had already been purchased and and how many needed still to be installed and. There are a ton already on hand or and or I think and ordered. That haven't been installed and so. Um, I think we need to cut that forty thousand. I don't know if you guys have, wanna address these or respond to these as we go. Maybe I'll just. Stop there and see if you have any consternation with cutting that one.
I agree in doing so. I mean, if we haven't, sitting there and they haven't been installed, it's gonna take some time to do that, so I would cut that for this year.
That, that's one of the things, the ones they do have on hand, they're planning on putting in this summer, you know, up there at the, on the, on the mountain, so.
We'll cut that one. I'm sorry, yeah.
No, no, that's fine.
Uh, the, the fifth, um, priority, so the second lowest priority was the. Uh, land water conservation fund grant kiosks, the county portion. There was some. Um, kind of back, not back and forth, but but Madam Clerk, I had this as two hundred and sixty four thousand.
Yeah, that's correct.
So.
That includes, I'm sorry, Mister Chairman, that includes the, the final design from RDG at the thirty four. Mister Brown removed the hundred and ten thousand.
Right, that's the visit Casper funding kiosk at the lodge.
Yes.
Um, and so. I think that one can come off.
With all the construction that we got going up on the mountain, none of this stuff is gonna get done before next summer anyway. I mean, honestly speaking, uh, with construction and everything else that we've got going. Um, and that was part of the, part of the reason why a lot of this stuff got held off on was. There was no need to put stuff in and then turn around and have it ripped out and start all over again.
So I think that one can come off. And then the buckrail at Crimson Dawn. Was a low priority and and I, that's two hundred and fifty thousand and I don't think that was a hard and fast number anyway. I think we take that out.
Yeah.
So. So yeah, the two hundred and sixty four includes both the RDG and the, uh, the two hundred and thirty for the. Kiosks, so.
Did it?
Mm-mm.
It didn't.
That's just part of it. There's another wayfinding signs below that.
Yes, yeah, the wayfinder's next. And it needs to be rebid.
Right.
Um, so I wouldn't, maybe if you were on this one, I was, I was talking about that. Sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, sorry. Okay, so Crimson Dawn, I think should come off. I think that's a kind of a questionable. I mean, I mean, not questionable. I I think it's a lower priority item and it's really not realistic that it's gonna get done. And I'm not sure that it needs to be done, especially this year. So then the RDG wayfinding signs needs to be rebid. Do we want to include that item? I had that crossed out as well.
No.
Okay.
As far as the, Mister Chairman, are the wayfinding signs, is that part of the project that's going on now with the, uh, road being putting?
Oh.
Being redone? Are any of those signs?
No, they were, they were all sharper.
You know, those signs have been put off for a long time, Mister Chairman. I don't know. I know it's been a real issue, just something to think about.
It's something about maybe next year after we get the roads prepared. And go from there, but I don't know with everything going on right now, that this is the year.
I, I think if you look at the historical, um. Like, wh- what, I, I think there are a whole lot of, um, balls in the air. Uh, for parks and I think there are a lot of projects and with the. With the lodge, I think that needs to be a high priority item. And and I think that there's just kind of a capacity issue. And so I, I think that if we. Get a thi- all the things on this revised list done, it's gonna be a lot easier for the future commissions to say, okay, now let's add. Three or four or five more, assuming we can afford it, assuming they make sense to the future commissions. So I, I think that, I think we can help the department focus in on these, um, these priority items. Especially in light of all the mountain construction. So powder house, um, roof replacement.
That needs to be done. That's in really bad shape.
Okay, that was, that was priority four, but that's, that's fine. Leave that on there.
Well, we're limiting out, we're taking out some of the other stuff in that. The outhouse roofs need to be replaced. They need to be upgraded because what they wanna do. It'll actually take less maintenance once they're redone, because what they wanna do is elevate the pitch. And they're not rebuilding the outhouses, they're just redoing the roof part, portion similar to what we did down in. Ponterosa Park when we rebuilt that one and all that snow slides off and it's just a better, it's just a better design than that flat roof that was on there, so. And there's nine of them, so it's not. Once you, once you do one, you can pretty much refab them and take it up there and get it done fairly quickly.
So we can leave those on there and trust that those, those will get done this fiscal, coming fiscal year. Log wall repair Crimson Dawn bunkhouse was a question mark. I think we just cross that off.
I don't know if we do that. Wasn't it that, uh, you didn't have a estimate on there because they couldn't find anybody to re-chink that?
It's not just re-chinking all the logs.
Are they?
Needs, needs to be replaced. One of the bottom logs, lower logs is my understanding is that that's where it needs to be, so.
So, between the MOU with us or our agreement with that group, Crimson Dawn group. What is our responsibility to repair maintenance of those buildings?
Well, I, I don't know. I've never looked at that, that agreement. Um.
If you don't fix it. Fix the chipping in the, the logs, it's just gonna continue to get worse and we'll just end up pulling it down.
Well, listen, I don't have a problem with. Budgeting for what we contractually obligated to do.
That's what.
When we have a question mark, um, I can't, I can't say, let's throw five hundred dollars or fifty thousand dollars. Or five hundred thousand dollars, so I'm just kinda like that the department needs to present as part of this process. That, even if it's, because some of these are guesses anyhow. Like the kitchen appliances and the tables, office and chairs for the lodge, and we'll talk about those in a minute, but. You know, to, we don't even have a place to begin to, to assign a budget number for that, so I don't think it's. Prudent for us to do that. If, if we get halfway through the year and it's like this has got to be done. Then we'll treat it like we do on other emergency situations and figure out.
Right, it, it, I wasn't saying we add it. I'm saying we need to look at it and see what our obligation is.
Great. I, I think that's, I think that's excellent. So between Michael and Heather. Uh, I think we can get some information. Okay. So then. For. Um, lodge furnishings, owner supplied. Um, tables, chairs, office furniture. Mister Brown had a low of twenty four thousand. And a high of fifty thousand. We wanna meet somewhere in the middle. For tables, chairs and office furniture. And a related question is on kitchen appliances for a commercial fridge in a range oven, fifteen thousand.
I don't know if we have to go that route since it's just a warming. Kitchen. That was one of the things that. I would like to find out a little bit more because there's a huge price difference when you go.
Commercial.
Commercial.
Yeah.
Huge price difference.
We go from. Less than five thousand dollars.
Yes, 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 yeah, you do. So I would like to have more information on that before we go, go that route. Um.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely not supposed to be a commercial kitchen.
No, and the one, and you know, with the, is even the power suppression system that was recommended by the county, it's a simple. System that's just right there in one place that you don't have to go in and. Uh, inspect it as often or anything else, so.
My, my feeling, I'm sorry.
No, I, I just, I just wanna make sure that we're. Doing what we need to do and not, not overdoing it.
My, my feeling would be that maybe we do seventy five hundred for kitchen appliances. And if we have to come back, because we're required to come back and do more, then fine. And then for tables, chair, tables, chairs and office furniture. Do something, uh, like, um, thirty seven thousand five hundred, which is kind of between hit the low number Michael gave us. And the high number that we see here. So then we've at least got some amount, um, penciled in for those. I think we oughta probably go with the fifteen thousand as requested for security cameras, doors, access and smart controls.
Absolutely. With how things are being torn up around this area. By vandals.
Yeah, not, not just this area, but this county.
You wanna go thirty five thousand for ease and even number or even easier?
It's going on all over the country from what I can tell, Mister Chairman.
Um, so thirty five thousand, Commissioner North pointed out, just a little bit. Rounder number, easier number. Uh, and then what do you wanna do on kitchen appliances?
Seventy five, I think that's.
Okay. Any objection, commissioners?
What's the total?
Uh, so the total would be thirty five thousand plus seventy five hundred plus fifteen thousand. So fifty, seven, five.
Plus twenty five. Didn't you talk about the outhouse roof?
Oh, no, we're not. That's a separate deal. I was just talking about the lodge furnishing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm.
You're getting ahead of us.
I apologize.
Okay, so.
Thirty five thousand for tables, chairs, office furniture.
Okay.
Seventy five hundred for kitchen appliances, fifteen thousand for security cameras, doors, access, smart controls.
Okay.
So a total of fifty seven five hundred instead of eighty. So then engineer architect contracts. Uh, I, I think there's no question on the Amundson on the lodge of sixty. Um, we're essentially contracted for that anyhow. The question for me is the Bear Trap shelters. The, just the construction administration for three, which we never, I mean, we were. Skeptical whether we were gonna do three or be able to do three anyhow is thirty seven thousand of that forty five. So. One, uh, I think the, the Bear Trap shelters continues to be problematic. Um, we saw that the bids blew us out of the water on what the, uh, estimate was gonna be.
I really think we need to kinda go back to the drawing board on some of this stuff because those prices were just, I. I think we need to go simple and provide something for people up there and, uh.
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel, I agree with you, Commissioner North. I don't feel we can, I don't feel it's responsible to. Put in one shelter for.
Two hundred and sixty thousand.
So I think this can be zeroed out, um, this forty five thousand. And like you said, go back to the drawing board. And, and figure out a way to do one or more in a cost effective way. And if somebody doesn't like it because it ain't pretty. Well, maybe future commissions will be rolling in the dough and can decide that that's a priority to redo them. Uh, I'm not saying we go buy a kit from Menards for five grand. Uh, obviously they cost more than that, but. But I do think we should go back to the drawing board. So I'd like to take out the forty five thousand.
Well, I, I really think we need to work with our building department and find out what's really. Because it's not a living, it, it's not a structure you live in. It's just a shelter. And that's the thing that I think we have gone way overboard on a lot of this stuff and there's some very simple. Things out there that we can do that, uh, that look good, that will fit up there and. I, I mean, I'm not saying we don't need to have the shelters because that, I wanna make sure that everybody understands that we do need to have those shelters put back up, but. Two hundred and sixty thousand or four hundred and thirty thousand for a single shelter is just, especially when it's, I mean, you can build a house for cheaper than that. So it doesn't make any sense.
So is it gonna be another fifty percent next year because of building costs?
No, it won't.
So. So Tracy, Madam Clerk, are you with us on that? We'll take out the forty five thousand. So then we go up from their new water line to the lodge. We have to leave that and, uh, it's one percent anyhow. Then one percent cash for reserve. Question is whether we leave the Bear Trap shelters one cent for a hundred and twenty in there or not. Or if, if we go truly back to the drawing board, we take it out. But if, if we do that, then I think we lose a little flexibility on, because it's one cent and we don't do one cent every year.
I think we oughta leave it in there. Because we, we all recognize the fact that we need the shelters. We just don't know what we need and we're having agreed on.
When, where and what.
Yes, but leave it in there because we don't do the one cent every time, so.
Commissioner Millen?
Now, this was for the Bear Trap shelters is the one shelter, all three shelters.
Yeah, this is just one.
That's what.
And then we, that you should be able to get three for that same price.
Is this? Is this the one that was being replaced over by the playground or is this over on the south? We weren't having. Per their plan, there wasn't anything at the south end.
This was the east one, this was.
This is the east one.
Yeah.
That had the fireplace. In it originally. It doesn't have one now.
Right, yeah.
Yes, I think this one should be left in there. If we can save money or, you know. Reduce the cost, great, but we should be getting at least that one east side shelter put back in.
Mister Chairman, it looks like to date, we have expended seven. Mr. Chairman, it looks like to date we have expended seven thousand nine sixty-five on that shelter.
For Eberd Miller.
Um, I don't have the detail, it's just posted to that account line out of that one twenty.
I wonder that was that was probably in conjunction with getting the the bids earlier this year.
Okay, that just happened, then it just the invoice just came through between May sixteenth and now, so.
Yeah, okay, I bet that's.
Okay.
Thanks for preparing the bid documents and reviewing the bids. Okay, well, the rest of the park stuff, as I understand it, is related to their budget, not capital. So do we then, do we do we have more to go over on? On that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna make sure we're leaving the one twenty in the reserve, the total one twenty?
Correct.
Yes.
And the two-point-three for the lodge?
Correct.
Thank you.
So the number was eight fifty-four.
Um, while we're on there, how much have we expended on the lodge so far? Do we need to leave that full amount in there?
We've expended eight ninety, one sixty-eight.
The that no, that's that's where, well.
Because they're they're just getting more.
Yeah, it needs to.
I I hear I hear what you're saying, or I I think I know where you're going. But with the pending project that has been delayed a couple of weeks. I don't have a good fuzzy feeling of altering that that number for the lodge. You know, if you.
I don't know, I that's where I was asking how much, I was just looking at what we had had allocated for. They spent eight hundred thousand already. That takes a pretty good chunk out of that number. I I'm just asking, I don't know, I I'm just trying to find out just exactly where we are versus what we had allocated start with.
I personally think it should stay in there because there could potentially be some unknown issues that may arise that may cost more money. Um, as we proceed forward.
I must be in a different mindset today because I find a lot of this humorous. I definitely agree with you, Steve, there's gonna need to be more money. Let's send the county attorney over to talk to him. Is it maybe after two hours, we could get a little five-minute break?
Yeah, I I think we're almost, I think we're almost done with the uh capital out-outlay. Um, Madam Clerk, did you, you were crunching numbers hardcore over there?
So I have the total one-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand five hundred.
One fifty-seven, five hundred?
Correct.
Instead of eight fifty-four?
Correct.
Okay, Commissioner. Commissioner Mills?
Uh, heard back from Tom from Fairgrounds, yes, they can live without the bleachers, that would reduce that by twenty thousand dollars.
What about the poor people who got a Sentinel's old beat-up bleachers?
They'll come back, they'll come back to the next year, they've they've got, they can sit on the new path, the new asphalt. All right, so commissioners, um, are we okay with removing twenty thousand from the fair's four-hundred-and-fifty-five?
Remember, and remember that was part of it was for like sideshows and whatnot, they still have chairs. Abilities to to. Partially, if not fully, do what they plan on doing with the bleachers, so I'm good with it. I seem to get good with it, so, yeah.
So we'll take out, and and Madam Clerk, I may have misspoken when I said four fifty-five because of the one cent asphalt. Um, where where did where were we before we removed the bleachers?
Four seventy-seven or something like that. For the fair?
Yeah.
Um. Four fifty-five before we moved that removed the three hundred.
Right.
So that would be one fifty-five, and now if you're wanting to take another twenty.
One thirty-five.
And then we need to talk about the shavings.
The what? Oh, the shavings. The shave ice, I'm sorry.
The dump truck full of shavings.
So that's not gonna be that.
Without the shavings conversation, where are we at with the number?
One thirty-five.
One thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay.
Why can't the city donate shavings to the CNFR, Steve?
We should get a list of what they donate compared to what we donate. And I don't think it's gonna be, it's not asking a lot for us to put in shavings.
Okay, so one thirty-five for fair, um. Equipment hardware, is that the next one we wanna talk about?
Yes, please. So there should be at the final page. Is a listing of copier replacements. This comes from Eileen. So thirty-six thousand five eighteen of that hundred-and-five-thousand-dollar number is for copier replacement. She has a replacement schedule that she works off of every year. And then the remainder of that request is uh for copies, our copies that we make throughout the year for all the various departments.
So what's that?
Hundred and five. Hundred and five.
Um, and and I'm sorry, we got thirty-six here for copiers.
Yes, the rest is for.
And then do we go to IT for the?
No, the remainder of this, oh, excuse me, of this request is our uh for our photocopies that we make throughout the buildings. There's not a narrative for that, my apologies.
So thirty-six, five, eighteen is just strictly the copier. I'm sorry, I'm not tracking.
To.
The out of the hundred-and-five-thousand dollars, thirty-six, five is for new copiers. The remaining seventy-five of that is for photocopies that cost to make on the machines we get charged per copy.
Oh, okay.
For the whole, yes, for our, you're welcome, I'm sorry.
So it's basically the contract with the service provider that 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 they've handled toner, um, maintenance, repairs. Um, we have to still buy paper, right?
Yes.
Well, I uh, it's crazy that we have. Copiers, not in every room, but we have a lot of copiers. But I have suffered the frustration of not having a good copier and your efficiency goes down. I mean, it's just so frustrating. And it's frustrating for the people that are running those copiers, not not me, Commissioner. So if that's the, if that that is what it is, I think.
It looks like most of this is where the decisions are.
I believe they all are.
So I I think we're, I think we're okay with that.
And I believe that's the end for that.
Okay. All right. Anything else under this equipment tab? Um, I do have a couple of updates. The roads from from Mr. Hagler, this is the sixty-thousand-dollar road study. It's mandated by auditors, it provides for the rating of the roads, so we can show we're compliant with GASP standards. And it is not discretionary. So we need to keep that one. Okay, and then the other is the MRG number?
I got that.
You did?
Yeah.
Yeah, five-nine-five?
Yes.
And change?
Yes.
All right, thanks Commissioner North for getting me closer to the the actual, and to Michelle for getting us.
The actual.
All right, let's take a ten-minute break if that sounds reasonable. Okay, we are in recess.
Tracy?
Yes.
Are for me to think we're gonna get done by noon with the ten-minute break?
Okay.
What what are our options? One option is for us to find some time in tomorrow's work session.
So we're not on all day today?
It wasn't.
Nope.
That's that's another option?
I I misunderstood, I guess, I apologize.
No, I I.
That's a bad option.
What?
That's a bad option.
What, the rest of today?
Yeah.
Okay, I actually have a. Yeah, so let me go to this with Michelle about flexibility for tomorrow afternoon at our work session. Um, otherwise, we may need to find another half-day.
At the very least, I'm. Now, we do have June, next Monday, correct? Don't recall.
And that was the transfer meeting.
That is the transfer meeting, we're having it too. Budget. Budget.
Yeah.
The twenty-fourth, and then is it half-day? And then I threw the transfer funds in there. I'm, yeah, I'm sorry.
Right.
But I thought we could kill two birds with one stone, so you guys wouldn't have to come back. I think if if we commit to more than four if needed on Monday, more than four hours if needed, if you if you can.
So, um, twenty-four. I would say. Whether it's half-day or three to five.
Um, so next Monday is twenty-four. Did I, I had it. Oh. I have a really important set on all.
No.
You've already done it, you said. It was just more of a, I'm saying, period with that.
I I can't.
He can't.
You have your watch off schedule.
I don't.
And and then you said.
What time, what time?
One thirty and I have my 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 so.
Pilt. And discussion with, so, yep, he's got. Okay. Now, did he make that adjustment on the pilt? Remember how he didn't discount it thirty percent like WCCA? Suggested.
Isn't that on your first page? I'm not sure. I don't have the document in front of me.
Pilt. And discussion with, so, yep, he's got. Okay. Now, did he make that adjustment on the pilt? Remember how he didn't discount it thirty percent like WCCA? Until further notice.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
If, um, Mr. Hagler gets back to us on those FEMA projects, if those are reimbursables, we can take that. Over a million dollar number out of this request.
And, and my text, um, I'll probably be able to visit with him in a bit, but he's got. Um. He was in, he's been in meetings, so he hasn't been able to text very much.
Okay.
All right. So. Let's, um, we're talking about University of Wyoming Extension. I can't find my spreadsheet for that one.
Did it get torn out?
Yeah, it did. Thank you very much. Thanks, Dave. Commissioner Milne, do you? Do you wanna go over some of that with the rest of the commission, or are we good for now?
No, we're good. We're just on a side discussion on. The pilt and the future, you know, a lot of this is crystal ball stuff with, uh, what the election, future elections are going to do. As far as the economies and stuff like that.
At the national level?
Yeah.
Federal money? Yep. All right, so, again, for the cooperative extension. Um, we have the narrative. When we had our. Discussion. I didn't have any. Uh, big items of concern. On this one. Are there questions or comments or concerns from the commission? Not on this one, there is a slight increase in the ask, but.
But it's, uh, in conjunction with UW. With what they're, what we're getting versus what we're paying for. Well, your flex. Whatever.
The one that contract labor services, that was the one question I had, why it was going up a little bit more, but. That was explained to us when she was here, so. For each educator and horticulture educator.
Yeah.
Yeah. The one that we could consider reducing perhaps is the travel. Consistently underutilized. Madam Clerk, uh, this is that line eighty one oh one, it says forty four hundred ninety dollars on my five, May third. Where are we at currently on that?
To date, excuse me, seven thousand two hundred and forty two.
Okay. So, Commissioner Laird, thank you. I started this conversation with, is there consternation, questions or concerns, in that I didn't have, really have any?
Well then. I guess I'll start with the cooperative extension, which is under Ag in your book in the front. Correct, the first one. If that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, if you just want to go.
Yeah, no, that, that sounds good.
Okay.
Do we have a number? Of current total number, or is that too complicated with all the things that are included and excluded?
Well, funny, I just ran that.
What?
Funny, I just ran that, or excluding one cent, County Road Fund, and Lakes, we're at fifty-seven million, eight-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirteen dollars.
Okay. And the last thing I had from Nick in the Treasurer's Office, which is what you guys have, I don't have anything more current than that. Yeah.
That's the most current one that he gave you today?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, do I have that one? Is that what was put on in front of me? Yeah, this one doesn't have any in my notes, so, okay. Now, did he make that adjustment on the PILT? Remember how he didn't discount it thirty percent like WCCA? Suggested.
Isn't that on your first page? I'm not sure. I don't have the document in front of me.
PILT. And discussion with, so yeah, he's got.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, two-nine-six-four.
Two-nine.
Seven oh nine. So then we get, we go clear down. So when we add everything in, and then we subtract the things you just mentioned, is that fifty-four, seven-oh-seven-three-one-five?
Correct.
No, that's wrong.
Fifty-two. Seven.
Seven fifty-five, does everybody see that? Go to the last page. Last page, last column, last row. Last number. Fifty-two million, seven-five-five, eight-two-one, eight-nine. And again, the number the clerk just gave us is fifty-seven something, fifty-seven million.
Eight-eight-one, seven-thirteen.
Okay, so we are five million
over.
Everybody capisce? So we gotta cut five million. Commissioner Laird.
Throw in a million dollars, it's all good.
Throw in from where, each?
A pocket.
I thought this pocket doesn't have that.
I don't, you know, I, I would like the Treasurer, I'd be, in some, in some instances, still like, ask him to, so I can just, I'm gonna ask him. Because I'm not entirely sure, Mr. Chairman, of how much money we have to work with, uh, totally.
Fifty-two million.
I'm not sure that I, I'd expand that.
So he came, Nick came and talked to us, made the adjustments we asked him to make. The county, this thing right here, County Revenue Estimating, gives great detail on each of, not each of them, but a lot of those items. Sorry, Dave. All right. So we're gonna work with a fifty-two million, seven-fifty-five revenue number until further notice.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
If, um, Mr. Hagler gets back to us on those FEMA projects, if those are reimbursables, we can take that over-million-dollar number out of this request.
And, and my text, um, I'll probably be able to visit with him in a bit, but he's got, he was in, he's been in meetings, so he hasn't been able to text very much.
Okay.
All right. So let's, um, we're talking about University of Wyoming Extension. I can't find my spreadsheet for that one.
Did it get torn out?
Yeah, it did. Three oh three. Thank you very much. Thanks, Dave. Commissioner Milne, do you, do you want to go over some of that with the rest of the Commission, or are we good for now?
No, we're good, uh, we're just on a side discussion on the PILT and the future, you know, a lot of this is crystal ball stuff with, uh, what the election, future elections are going to do as far as the economies and stuff like that.
At the national level?
Yeah.
Federal money? Yep. All right. So, again, for the cooperative extension, we have the narrative, when we had our discussion, I didn't have any big items of concern on this one. Are there questions or comments or concerns from the Commission?
Not on this one, there is a slight increase in the ask, but but it's, uh, in conjunction with UW with what they're, what we're getting versus what we're paying for. All your likes. Whatever, um, the one that Contract Labor Services, that was the one question I had, why it was going up a little bit more, but that was explained to us when she was here, so.
Forage educator and horticulture educator.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, the, the one that we could consider reducing perhaps is the travel. Consistently underutilized, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, this is that line eighty-one oh one, uh, it says forty-four hundred ninety dollars on my five, May third, where are we at currently on that?
To date, excuse me, seven thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two.
Okay. So we can't, yeah, I mean, I don't know if we can go down on that one, if we can, then only maybe twenty-five-hundred bucks. I don't know how critical that would be. Yeah. So, um, so I guess what are you saying, you're okay with their proposal? Okay, does, does anybody? So Commissioner Laird, thank you, I started this conversation with, is there consternation, questions or concerns, and that I didn't have, really have any. Are, are we okay with this one as is?
Mr. Chairman, I would agree on the travel, it doesn't seem like they've hit the, those numbers consistently, so I would say twenty-five-hundred there as, as well as the vehicle maintenance, that seems to also be, I mean, it's twenty-five-hundred possibly there, I know it's five thousand and and they're smaller budgets, but I think that if we look at all of these and look at where they're not utilizing the money and, and make the cuts where they need to be, we should be doing that, so. I would propose travel and then vehicle, those two lines at twenty-five-hundred each, uh, reduction.
What'd you say the travel was to be, today?
Seven thousand.
Seventy.
Some, seventy-two.
Seventy-two hundred.
Would you bring it?
Uh, Commissioner North and Commissioner Milne.
No, I'm just answered.
Okay.
Didn't he? I don't have any problem with that, um, the only thing, as far as the travel and expense goes, and repairs and main, maintenance repairs, as we all know all it takes anymore, is, uh, is one breakdown and you'll hit five thousand dollars really fast, so, I mean, it doesn't take very much to, to hit that, and, you know, when you're repairing things anymore. So I, I personally would leave the five thousand right where it is because, yeah, well, that's kind of what I was getting at, tires, or, I mean, you do anything anymore to a on these new vehicles, and it's gonna cost you a lot. The tr, the travel, um, you know, so much of that is dependent from year to year on what you have to do and where you have to go, and I don't know exactly what all their travel is, so I, you know, it's not, I, I understand that we're gonna have to go through cut a lot of these quite a bit, but this one, I really just don't see a whole lot of, lot of extra put into it, so.
Commissioner North, uh, would either you or you, Commissioner Milne, object to reducing travel by twenty-five-hundred, I know it's not much, but it is something, and I think that could be an important position as we have continued discussion today.
I don't have a problem with those, uh, the question I have is eighty-four oh five, Madam Clerk, have they spent any of that? More? Than the five oh one?
They've expended one thousand, one hundred, nine dollars.
So I'd say reduce that one by a grand or fifteen-hundred as well.
I think that would, I think I would reduce it for fifteen-hundred, and then leave the tra, leave the maintenance where it is, and if you want to drop that travel down to eight thousand or seventy-five-hundred, I don't have a problem with that.
Commissioner Milne?
I'm good.
Uh, so do we go seventy-five-hundred or eight thousand for the travel?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, okay. Let's do that, Madam Clerk.
And then we're reducing eighty-four oh five also?
Uh, yeah, eighty-four oh five goes to fifteen-hundred, and eighty-one oh one, you know, is that seventy-five-hundred?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, just a question for my own education here. So let's assume we're five million dollars over on our entire budget. So why wouldn't we have a, why wouldn't we have, the computer would have to do this, my mind can't do it, it'd take me two weeks. You would, you would take each person's estimated budget that they've set forth, and you figure out the percentage that each one of those budgets needs to be reduced based upon the size of the budget they have, and you get the five-million-dollar reduction. I mean, it's a mathematical equation.
I, I understand, I, I think it's completely, um, I think it's too arbitrary for my liking, for example, I wouldn't want to take a dime from Youth Crisis Centers, a hundred, hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Take them out.
Well, but, but then.
Take the ones out, you don't want to reduce, that's all, I, I don't want to argue with you, I'm just saying, I'm, help me figure it out.
You, you asked why we can't approach it like a, let's take ten percent across the board. It's because there, for example, the, some of the sheriff's law enforcement items, some of Road and Bridge's items are high dollar, but they're critical for any number of reasons, so we really do have to look at this, um, on a department-by-department approach, so. I, I hear what you're saying, but I just don't think we can approach it like that. Want to do assessors next?
Sure.
I think from our, my recollection, our discussion with the assessor indicated that she could live with going an additional year without the two additional field staff. That's seventy-nine thousand, plus or minus, is my.
Seventy-two.
What?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Did she want to hire, at least one? Is that my recollection? Just a, I'm just asking.
Uh, well, they work in teams, and so I think it's kind of a zero or two approach. So I think she was the one that she could forego one more year, a, a team.
Now Tracy, what would that be, that salary, but what would that be with burn?
Total, seven, no.
Wait, 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 wait. I'm having a hard time hearing. Madam Clerk, um, and then Commissioner Milne.
Approximately a hundred and ten thousand total, Commissioner North.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
So are we in agreement on that? So we'll do that, and then I feel that we can talk about reducing litigation legal expense, now that we have a pretty good handle on the nature and magnitude of the, the appeals, I think we can, um, I, I would suggest take off maybe fifteen thousand from litigation. That would be, I, hopefully, the last two years have been more of an aberration. But if we only have eleven property tax appeals.
I'd agree with that.
So what, what number do you? You want to leave it at twenty-five thousand or subtract twenty-five thousand?
Leave it at.
Okay. Anybody?
Did you say leave it at twenty-five thousand, Jim?
Well, ta, take it.
Take it down.
Take it down to twenty-five.
So it stay, so it gets to twenty-five thousand. On travel, I know that the state requires, um, the assessor's folks to travel down to Cheyenne, for example, for trainings, but if we're not bringing on these two new people, my thought was that we could, uh, reduce that from thirty-five uh, to maybe twenty-seven, which is where it was last year.
Doesn't the state have?
Zoom?
Zoom or anything else?
I have no idea.
Good thing.
I think.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't see where they've ever gone over twenty thousand in travel either. So maybe taking that down to twenty or twenty-five, I would think.
Less than a half, because more than they don't ever hit that, plus then they don't need to train those others.
Mr. Chairman, they've expended eighteen thousand, five thirty-nine.
Let's, let's, uh, maybe leave that at twenty thousand.
I would.
Okay. Those are the items I was thinking about that stood out to me and kind of took into account our discussions with the assessor. So Madam Clerk, what do you have for a, a number for the assessor?
So, well, I don't have the burden yet, so I won't have that number yet. I've got to do some more calculating.
Fair enough. All right.
How di, how difficult would it be to find out what our total travel expenses for the whole county are per year?
Not that difficult, I mean, it would happen like in five minutes if that.
Would, but would, could you estimate the number?
I'm not gonna estimate a number, I can do some figuring for you.
Great.
I would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Would you like that, sir?
Well, I don't want you to interrupt anything now, I would like to know that, because it, it, I just, my more mind is sorting out maybe easier ways to do this, I might even be able to convince the chairman of some of them, but I need to know some numbers first.
So you're, you're asking, so we're all clear, you're asking the clerk to basically look at all departments, all elected officials, um,
Right.
travel line item?
Right.
Okay.
And give me a total number.
Expended, correct? Total expended?
Yeah, yeah, it's fine. It's fine.
Well, you might as well give us the total budgeted for, for.
That too, yeah.
I don't know, uh, this year, it's fine.
Okay.
But I, I don't think there's a hurry.
No.
Maybe the next meeting or, or so, not, not tomorrow, but a couple.
Oh, well, I can email it this afternoon, so.
Well, great. All right, on to the next.
Well, let's skip building maintenance, because that's gonna take some time.
I'm just on child support.
No, you guys don't have it, like I do, okay.
I had a question on that.
So child support enforcement is a total pass-through. So we do not, we cannot reduce their budget, because it's a contract through the state, so we, we are just the bank.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Tracy, if you look at the sheet though, it, they increased their wages, salary, but the medical insurance is decreasing?
That could be because some of their employees chose not to take the insurance.
Okay. I was just curious, it looked a little weird to me.
Clerk of Court is the next one I have.
So it costs us a million dollars a year to collect from?
Which, which page are you on?
Well, no, I'm, I'm back, I'm still on the child support, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the number right, I'm having some difficulty seeing a couple things. Costs us approximately a million dollars a year to collect child support, is that it? Is that what I'm reading?
It doesn't cost us any.
We're a pass-through, Commissioner Laird.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Clerk of Court Administration. The narrative from our district court clerk, I think provides quite a bit of detail, and our discussion with her, added additional certification, she reduced, um, from the previous year in a number of places. Did, let's see, she thought, perhaps, my notes indicate that the title twenty-five, where is that? Is that the court-appointed attorney?
Yes.
Yeah, there, that the six-hundred-and-twenty could be reduced, um.
The five-twenty?
What?
I got on my notes, reduce it to five-twenty, potentially?
I had minus fifty thousand, so reduce by fifty thousand. I don't know if I would made that up in my head, or if that's the number, so, I don't know, anybody else remember? This is the second page, Clerk of Court, District Court, um, court-appointed attorney.
Yeah, she's got six-hundred-and-twenty requested, four-hundred-and-sixty expended so far, but.
Madam Clerk, what's that number, uh, currently? Expended?
Five-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, six-seventy-seven.
Five-fifty-one, okay.
So may I make a comment, Mr. Chairman, on this, on a couple things? There was a bill in the legislature to reduce the number of jur, Wyoming's only one of four states that still has a twelve-person jury. And, uh, so a friend of mine got, uh, a legislator to introduce a bill in the Senate, and it passed twenty-nine to one to reduce, uh, juries from twelve to six. And it got to the House, and for some reason, the House didn't understand it, and they, didn't even get out of the committee. But if they go, if they, if, if we supported something like that, that would save the, every county a ton of money in terms of cutting the jury, jury down to six. And as I say, we're only one of four states left that still has a twelve-person jury.
I think if you go to the WCCA legislative meeting in January of twenty twenty-five.
I might bring that up.
You can lobby your backside off and, uh, maybe get, get everybody squared away, I don't disagree in principle, but coming back to, to this, are we, we're okay, I think, with the reduction? What do you, where do you think we should land on that?
Five-fifty. Five-fifty.
Well, if it's already at five-fifty right now, we still got stuff coming in, probably sixty.
It, it, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Milne, it looks like everything's been submitted, because I have expenditures for June, so it looks like everything's been expended of that line.
And that was five-fifties?
Five-fifty-one.
Five-fifty-two. So real five?
Seventy-five.
Yeah.
Gives them a little cushion, just in case, if scale a little more. Commissioner feel? Commissioner North, you'll get a five-seventy-five instead of six-fourty?
I think that's wrong.
Okay, let's do that. Five-seven-five. All right, um, I did ask the clerk, you'll recall, being asking her about travel expenses, and now that she's president, um, their association, and with the other items or trainings they have, I, I don't know that we can reduce that, and I think she's pretty proactive anyhow, so are there any other questions, comments, or concerns with the Clerk of District Court's budget? Okay, moving on.
I just want to make sure that my buddies don't think I'm crazy, but it's six person in civil juries, you still maintain twelve persons in criminal juries.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, the Commissioner's tab is the next one I had.
Which we have went through?
Which we did, County Roads. We did.
Equipment, I think.
Equipment, we did.
Projects and grants.
Grants, we
Did.
Did. Or did we just, yeah, we did that.
Community action.
Community action?
Okay.
Questions, comments, concerns?
I think she kept it the same, didn't she?
She dropped it.
She'd even got reduced a little bit, forty grand.
No. No.
What was it?
Hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars.
But, um, I think this is another one of those areas where, um, it's eighty thousand dollars. Another one of those areas where it's $80,000 total request.
Right.
We are a very small part of their budget. I think this organization probably does a lot for the county.
They do.
Picks up, picks up a lot of the slack that we're not even aware of, so.
They do.
I, I didn't really have any areas where I thought this is where we can or shouldn't.
I'd like to leave it with what they requested myself, because I agree with what you're saying.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is one of those programs that. We need, they, the funding and a lot, majority of their funding that they receive is. Is kind of dependent also on us as far as having the game. Same thing that we're asking Midwest to have for their community center. Their funding is relying a lot on us giving that little portion. As well, so, yeah.
Okay. Moving on to coroner. My note was that the coroner told us that we might be able to cut 40,000, around $40,000. Think that was in, under the consultant autopsy 7031 item. Madam Clerk, what, where are we at currently on that budget line item expenditures?
7031, you said?
Correct.
We have expended. Well, hold on. Nothing can be easy here. We have expended 68,227.
Okay. And if I look at the previous, all the, the previous years, it is in that 68, 55, 68, 75,000. So if we took off 38,000 from that line item, it'd be, it'd remain at 100,000, which still gives us some cushion there.
That sounds reasonable.
Commissioner Freel and North?
Still think it's a little high, but that's fine.
I, I would say that both in the coroner's discussion with us and in his narrative, he was also proactive and, and found some other places to reduce from the previous years, so. I don't, I don't mind leaving it a little bit higher and, and if next budget cycle, we have another conversation about it. You know, it may come down a little more, but if, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, it's just that the highest amount has been 75,000 itself, so, I mean, we're leaving a $25,000 buffer in there and I get it, but.
Well, keep in mind that we don't have the in-house pathologist anymore.
Yeah, and I think he's kept those autopsies down. I think they could be 50% higher than they are, to tell you the truth.
Okay. Anything else on the coroner, from the coroner's budget request?
Did we need to add that 35,000 in on the line item for the indigent funeral?
That's in your commissioner controlled accounts? It's already?
Oh, I get you, yeah, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, am I taking that to 100,000 for the 7031 account line?
Correct. While we're on this subject. We have mausoleum to buy.
We already bought it.
We bought it. We have concrete to pay for, but I assume that's going to be, not going to be a huge ticket.
Has it, has it been, has it been ordered already?
Not to my knowledge. We just got the invoice for the columbarium and we took it out of Mr. Whip's budget. He had.
Is Mr. Freel's name going to be engraved on it?
It might be.
I thought you started this whole thing.
Not in a good way.
No.
Alright, so we're, we, okay, thank you for reminding me on that. Want to move to county attorney?
Sure.
Okay. Um, where are we at currently on line 8101 travel expenses?
Looks like.
They have not expended any.
I think that should come down, um, at least by half. They will have to travel to Waco. When you say they, the county attorney. I don't think the deputies go, but whatever. I still don't think we need 5,000, so. I'd be open to taking that down to 2,000 or 2,500.
25, 25.
I, I'm agreeing with that, Mr. Chairman. My, my thought on travel expenses and why I asked that question was. Is the possibility of considering taking it out of everybody's budget and having one figure that we put out for travel expenses and then they have to apply if they're going to make a travel expense? And then we decide, you know, we have, we have a little more control and we, we have one item of travel expense that covers the county. And it's like, it's like a lot of things where somebody has to put in an invoice saying they want to do this and then we decide, do you really need to do this? I think that kind of removes something out of there that I think maybe should be out of there.
Mr. Chairman?
Just a thought.
Yeah.
I'm also asking on the involuntary committal expenses to where that's at year to date, because it's showing zero on here and it looks like it's consistently been less, well, it's been less than $5,000. It's been spent out of 15, but we don't have anything showing right now.
There's, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Freel, there's nothing expended?
It's just we cut it in half.
What did you say that line was, Mr. Freel?
7901, it's involuntary commit.
Oh, okay.
Expense.
I'm okay with that. I think that one of. I think this is for outside counsel when necessary, right? And maybe there are other things involved in it, but, but, but right now, our county attorney is very proficient at involuntary commitment Title 25 stuff, so we're in a pretty good place right now. I think that. If there were some, I can imagine some situations where we might have a, have an issue, need to get outside counsel. So I'm good with taking it down to 7,500. If we have something blow up in this respect, we might have to find some money somewhere, but I'm okay with that for now. So let's do that. Take off, we're going to cut that in half.
I'm not sure I wouldn't go down to 5,000.
Any other items?
Contract labor.
Yeah, I think this is another one of those where we might want some flexibility. I don't know that we put our experts in litigation under this column, but conceivably. If you have outside consultants, attorneys, paralegals, so I'd kindly like to leave that one alone this year.
Well, and notice we have to last year, so it's already been modified. Let's see where, maybe leave it late for this year. Approach it next year again.
If you cut it, if you cut it, Mr. Chairman, it gives them a signal. We don't want them hiring outside labor. Which I don't want them doing. I think they can handle some of these things.
And, and I think we need to have some flexibility.
Yes, we do.
Cut it, we can cut it a little bit, but I don't, I wouldn't be in favor of cutting it very much. I like cutting it in half. I think that's too.
Aggressive.
And I'm just looking at the last three years, the expended zero out of it, so.
We go 75 or 7?
Think about cutting it for half, by half, Mr. Chairman. I think that's not a reasonable cut. I mean, not an unreasonable cut.
Think about potentially what's coming up this year too, though.
What?
What's the one?
What's coming up?
If we were to reduce it, I'd say by 2,575 is what I would like to see done, but, and, and that's just simply looking at the last three years. You have nothing that's been expended out of it. I just paid it sitting in the line item that's never getting used.
Okay. Let's do that, Madam Clerk.
What was the final number?
We're going to leave, or we're going to take it down to 7,500, so that'll reduce it by 2,500.
That was contract labor, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
In fact, I wouldn't mind seeing a moratorium on contract labor for the whole county for about a year.
We know we got enough attorneys.
Enough drillers. We got enough everybody.
On and off. I mean.
County, county clerk. Get out the red pen.
Oh, I'm always expecting that.
Well, we didn't approve that trailer, did we?
Trailer's bought.
Where's this tra?
Been paid for, baby.
The trailer's like two years ago.
And car.
She gets the job done, man. You know what I'm saying?
Alright, well, I have written down for county clerk from our blah, 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 blah.
You got blah, I got wah, wah, wah.
I got, you want any cheese with that wine? Wow. Get serious or you're going to get in trouble. Madam Clerk, in the last, I guess it's been about a month, are there any budgetary developments that impact? A lot of your numbers are for, under elections are different, obviously, with it being an election year. Are you still comfortable with the numbers that we have being proposed by you?
Yes, I believe so. I'm hoping.
One of the things I had written down. Line item 7201 postage box rent, I guess it's more of the postage. I wrote down that you indicated it may need to come up or may need to go up because of absentee, but. If you're still okay with 225, 225,000. Then, then I am too, but I, I did write that down from our discussion.
Well. I think we can hold that. I'd like just to wait and see how that pans out.
Okay. So gentlemen, are there questions, comments, or concerns with the clerk's proposed budget?
There's a lot of concerns, but no questions.
I, I think with it being an election year. There's just the realities of that that are what they are. Last call for the clerk's budget.
I agree with her budget.
Okay. Move on to development.
You got three minutes.
Nothing. It's a very special meeting in three minutes.
Let's, uh. Well.
Well, then we already talked about their equipment. That's the main portion of it. Contract planner. Was the, would be the thing for me and then publications.
Abandoned building fund. I was thinking we could remove that in half.
Which one's that?
Third from the bottom.
8434. Yeah. So yeah, let's, can we take that to 5,000?
The abandoned building fund?
Yeah, 8434.
Wait, we're, so is there any objection to taking it from 10,000 to 5,000? On the abandoned building fund? My thinking is that sometimes those are discretionary, can wait another year. And if it's a crisis, we have to deal with it anyhow.
So the question I had was 7401 publications. Way over budget? Well, not, I mean, percentage wise.
Yeah, why, why did, Madam Clerk, you got that one? Why, where are we at? It was at 6,200. I assume it's some, oh, notice of publication.
It's. Legal notice publications?
Right.
Right.
Correct?
Well, no.
No, it's just publication books.
Publication books?
Did we do some printing, some, here's a handy?
So there, we also did a transfer of funds, so, um, actual to date 6,600. And I think the way that Patrick explained it to me, that some books were bought, a whole series of books were bought.
That's right.
After, I don't know, in a, in a weird order also, or hadn't been bought and they needed to be last fiscal or something. And so we had to get two sets of, or something like that, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah, that we'd be able to use in the future or something.
The new code books, yeah. But we don't, we shouldn't need to buy those, so we should still be, again, so we should be good at the $2,000 level.
Yes, because.
At this point this year, right?
Yes, because I questioned him on that discrepancy and he felt comfortable that that 2,000 would cover it.
Where are we at with 7031?
Contract labor.
4,987. Expended.
So can we take that down to 40,000? This line, Patrick told us it was increased to compensate any overage accumulated in funding the third-party contract planner.
Can we cut it in half?
Shouldn't some of those funds come out of the salaries though?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Until we, until we fill that position, that's where it should come out of.
I'd personally say reduce that down to, by 40, down to 10. Well, it gives you some overage, but if you're taking the planner out of the salaries where it should be coming from, you shouldn't need that much additional.
But Mr. Chairman, for historical purposes and for accuracy, if you want to do that, then you need to reduce the salary line versus the budget and leave it in contract planner. Because that's the appropriate line to take those expenses out of. Which I can figure, you know, that, including the burden.
Well, you know, as, as we've seen, it's hard to hire a planner. It's been open since the end of January. The good candidates are few and far between and get lots of job offers across the country. Could remain open for an extended period of time. So this is a hard one, because on one hand, you could cut it by ninety-five thousand dollars, or whatever that is, plus burden. But then if next month, we hire somebody. So it is, um, it is an issue. I think what my recollection is, is that the contract planner firm that we have, when fully utilized, that firm's fee is actually more than the planner's salary. I don't know if that's exactly accurate, but as I recall, Mr. Holbrook told me, um. That, or maybe it was Danielle, in any event, uh, that it, uh, it can, it can add up, so if. So I don't know how much we want to adjust either of these. And then I can't recall what we're, um, our temporary planning, building supervisor is, if that's a ten percent increase in his salary.
I don't, I don't, I don't know.
In, in any event, yeah, I, I don't, I don't like it, but I, I don't think we can move those around too much and just hope for the best. Just my thought.
I don't really want to touch the salary, just even. I don't want that to be a hiccup as far as if we do find a candidate to hire. So that needs, I, I think that needs to stay as is the, the contract planner.
We also have Atlantic Electric doing the wind farm electrical inspections.
Right. I, I think between the two, that we may need to actually unfortunately leave it as it sits. I don't know. What are your thoughts?
Can we potentially cut that, then, the contract planner down to thirty, and then obviously if we start going up as the year goes along? But we haven't touched any of the salary, can you remove it at that point from the salary?
Currently.
I think that's what we should do.
Cut the contract planner to what?
Thirty.
Okay.
And then re.
We'll see. Where we land. Any other items on the development?
Do you have a question on eighty-four thirty-nine Solason land for fire inspections? Have they, has that been expended at all this year?
No.
So that was also, thanks for bringing that up, um. Fire inspections, thirty thousand represents funds allocated, cover services provided by Nantucket County Fire District Fire Marshal to Development Department, including plan, review, inspections, and other related services. Corresponding with enforcement of the International Fire Code. Sounds like it's really important, but why are we at a zero?
If, if I recall, this has been an invoicing issue more than just this, this one. I don't know what the disconnect is, I, I, I don't know the history, but this has been. This is historically how this goes, it seems.
Well, twenty-two, twenty-three, they expended double what it was.
So that would have been the two years, yeah.
Well, they're still, they're still doing it, I just don't.
Someone's not submitting an invoice. Yes.
Yeah, it's supposed to be thirty thousand.
Who has, who has, who has looked to see whether it's an appropriate and reasonable fee?
Thanks.
For the amount of work. Because.
Isn't it part of our MOU with district or something like that? I don't remember.
I don't know, to be honest with you, you'd have to ask legal.
So maybe somebody could help me real quick too.
What's that?
On here, I don't remember where he pointed it out, or if he pointed it out. But per the sheet versus. What he has in his narrative, he has training certifications at five thousand, got that, I see it. But above that, he has professional development of ten thousand five hundred. Where is that on his sheet? I, I don't see it.
Was that gonna be a training certification?
No, he has that separate. Was there some deal that we had with him, like we did with Chrissy, as far as his development? And is that why it's included, but not included in the sheet, or where? I don't understand.
I don't either.
I don't mean to take us down a rabbit hole, but. If there's ten thousand five hundred, we can cut from somewhere a little bit. But I don't see it on, I don't see it on your spreadsheet, is what I'm getting at.
Right.
And so I was wondering if it's buried into something else.
I don't see anything that. Would absorb that ten-five.
Right.
Maybe I just thought it wasn't necessary and didn't put it in.
Well, it sounds good to me.
I don't recall having a conversation about that.
So yeah, you're talking professional development of ten thousand five hundred isn't in the spreadsheet.
That's correct, and I don't, um.
In the narrative, doesn't, is pretty.
Fake.
Flowery, yeah. Is that what you said?
Vague.
Oh, I think you said fake.
Fake.
Um, it is vague.
I want to worry about it then, it's not in the sheet, call it good, let's go.
Okay.
I think those two would go together.
You think, but.
No, he only, they've only expended twenty-four dollars and seventy cent, seventy-six cents out of travel.
Well, let's cut that one in half, unless there's objection.
No.
Travel expenditures from three thousand to fifteen hundred. Thank you, Commissioner Laird.
Okay. What? Sure there. Eighty-one oh one.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay.
Do we want to? Switch gears?
I think we need to switch gears to our executive session. Um, so I, uh, would entertain a motion to recess this meeting.
How about we recess?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in recess.
Are we coming back in here for more media after we're done?
Yes.
So are we, is there somebody in there waiting for us?
We need to come.
I, I know, I was just kind of looking for my sheet, I have yours.
And then I'll just go on later and change the heading for this meeting to combined.
Call the meeting order for our special meeting agenda, Monday, June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. It is twelve, twelve P M. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Frill.
Here.
Commissioner Laird.
Present.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Nicolason.
Here. I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Wyoming Statute sixteen-four four oh five A two.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Frill, seconded by Commissioner North, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in executive session.
We'll be back in a little bit.
Yeah, it'll probably be about one, it might be one fifteen. And then we're not going to go very long, because we, some of the commissioners have other obligations, but, yep. Great. Okay. Thanks.
We're back after our executive session. I would entertain a motion to adjourn both our, well, we did adjourn. Do we have to adjourn the executive session on the records? All right, we adjourned that. So just the special meeting. Special, special work session.
Make a motion that we adjourn the special work session.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner North, said by Commissioner Freel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.